The two-stage July 25th Board of Selectmen meeting together is typical. We'll cover our liaison reports, open for public comment, hear from the town manager. We have a hearing classification plan change to be discussed tonight. We'll chat and amend the Board of Selectmen policies around licenses that are described in Article three of the Selectmen policies. We'll review a Keno policy developed by Town Council. We'll finalize the town manager's fiscal '18 goals and we'll review a Board of Selectmen survey that was been discussed now. Is this the third time that we've discussed it?
Yeah, I think so, maybe, yeah.
Yeah, regarding the potential, potential, the surveying attitudes regards of the potential override. And with that, I'll open it up for Selectmen Liaison's report.
I have nothing to report today.
Dan?
Thank you, Chairman. A couple items. Spoke to Chairman Phil Pacino of the Reading Municipal Light Department Board. The CAB, the Advisory Board to the RMLD, has been trying to get a quorum to meet so they can convene that subcommittee regarding the pile of payments to the town of Reading, but they haven't had much vote, is what Phil told me. RMLD wants to move ahead with it. CAB seems to be the sticky point.
Which members of the CAB have been on the table?
I don't know, he didn't say. But it's a quorum issue, it's not a desire issue on their part, for sure.
So this was, this was looking at the schedule of paying, you know, reopening that?
Reopening the way in which that is calculated.
Indexing it a different way.
Looking at any and all.
Long-established, never-convened committee.
So, so it's the, the RMLD wants to do, but that's, that the?
It's actually CAB that formed the committee.
Right.
If you look in their minutes back in whenever, 2008.
Why would the C A B?
Yeah, why would the C A B?
I asked myself that question.
And not RMLD. Our relationships with RMLD.
They did it at the urging of then-chair, I'm sorry, then General Manager Lynn Rucker. So Rucker wanted to do it.
No, I'm not talking about why the committee was established. I'm talking about why wouldn't the discussion happen with the commissioners directly rather than the CAB? This is a discussion between the town of Reading and the commissioner.
Well, you can certainly approach them and see if they want to restructure it. I'm sure they'll want to get the CAB involved.
I get that, I get that entirely, the question.
I think it's, John, because the committee as established previously, ten, fifteen years ago, called for the CAB to convene the, convene the review process. So there was a, there was a committee in place to do such things, it just never had done it. And so, in order to follow the protocols of the way it was laid out ten or fifteen years ago, it's a CAB subcommittee. I think that's the hanging point here.
That makes, that makes perfect sense, John. I guess we had to decide if it's still not working after eighteen years and now a couple of weeks.
Yeah, well, this is summer.
Fair question.
I give them a few more weeks. I don't know when the annual amount is. Bob, do you know when they set that amount every year?
Um, I think September? No. I calculated in, in April, based on annual, so that's the default already. You know, in theory, the clock started running, I guess you'd say July 1st.
Okay. Remember, we just came up in town meeting, it's now July, heading into August, so we're already three months? So I wouldn't want this to go past.
So Dan, do you think, I'm not going to say the reluctance of the CAB, but sort of the, the reticence is because the CAB represents all the towns, whereas the beneficiary of this is mostly Reading, so it's not in their sort of self-interest to come up?
I would hesitate to speculate on that. It may be a simple quorum problem, it's done uncommon from that quorum.
It's summer. It's a summer. I think, you know.
John?
Yes, Bob?
I've spoken to the three town managers, administrators, and given them an order of magnitude of the discussion, and they're not concerned, nor are their boards. I said, you know, most likely this is an order of magnitude of twenty or twenty-five or fifty thousand dollars at most. I said, yeah, unless you're not asking to double the dividend from?
No.
Almost two million.
Anything else, Dan?
Yeah, as many of you are aware, we were in the midst of steps leading up to renegotiating the Comcast, cable TV, and other packaged items, which we don't regulate, just the cable TV part. And as part of that, we're looking for community input. The most important thing that people can do have not already participated is to take the Reading Community Needs Assessment Survey, which relates to wants and desires for our cable service going forward. That can be found at, for those of you who want to write this down, HTTPS, colon, www.surveymonkey.com/r/writingma-survey.
Yeah. Can we just get it on the website? Can't we put it on the front page?
Is it on the website? Yeah, I think so. I'm having trouble here, my computer.
Yeah, if we, maybe the paper will want to run a little article.
That might be helpful if the newspaper actually advertised that. Anything else, Dan?
Yes, but attending Board of Health meetings as liaison, at their last meeting, and this was in tonight's paper, an executive session, in my view, with no prior notice, was announced, which I thought was irregular, and there's some other issues going on with the board right now. Principally, they have not appointed Laura Lasik, the newly hired health agent, as their health agent to act on their behalf. Fortunately, the town is covered in that regard right now by the North Reading gentleman, Bob Bracy, but that may or may not continue for, you know, a lot longer. So I think it's time to have that board in here, we need to talk frankly about some of these issues.
Okay.
So I would hope that could happen soon.
Understand.
If I could just add a small point, I've only read the article once, got late today. Just emphasize, there are no vacancies in the Health Division that are uncovered. We have two actual people from North Reading covering for the public health nurse and the health agent. Otherwise, and we have a health agent, she can only do duties that are, if you will, internal and not the responsibility of the Board of Health or their designated agent. So she can do all the rest of the work, but she can't do that. So I can't describe the details, but we had an incident over the weekend where the Chair of the Board of Health needed to do things, and he did a great job. Laura was physically present with her and helping, but she did not have the legal authority to do those actions. And it turned out Bob Bracy was not available during that period of time. So the town is covered. I said that two weeks ago. We have all the positions covered. It's not ideal, but, you know, if there's any kind of a problem, any time of a crisis, we're okay.
Good. We're covered. But nonetheless, that appointment ought to be made, in my view.
Anything else, Dan?
That's all.
Thank you, Barry.
So today, actually, I attended the initial meeting of Wayfinding and Branding Subcommittee. You may recall that through most of Julie Mercier's efforts, we procured a very, very difficult-to-obtain grant that allowed us consulting services to kind of have a professional come in and talk about sort of, not only the wayfinding, but just sort of how we brand ourselves as a community. You know, things from not just signage, but furniture, from just, you know, what we think of ourselves and sort of how to restructure or how to, you know, kind of put ourselves out there as a community. Today, we had the first meeting. It was a lot of town staff, myself as a selectman, some local business owners, and it was really just kind of interesting beginning to kind of just sort of, you know, being asked about, you know, what do you think, you know, what, describe Reading in one word, describe Reading in two words, and just all the diverse kind of thoughts that people had. And so his task is kind of to come up and sort of give us some suggestions on sort of how we brand ourselves as a, as a community. The guy that's doing it, I read up on him and he's done a lot of the stuff for other communities, so I think it's going to be something really positive and I think a lot to take from. So today was just the initial one, I'll keep everybody posted as we go forward. I think that there's a community, I think there's a public meeting kind of anticipated, I think sometime in the fall. How many people, probably a dozen, about a twelve?
Yeah, about a, yeah, I didn't count, but.
Fifteen, maybe, yeah. You know, town staff, so DPW Police, Library, you know, Andrew, Home Economic Development, and then some community folks, some business owners. It was, it was a good group. It'd be fun to kind of see what he comes up with, and again, this was a highly coveted grant that we were a real lucky get, so we'll see what happens going forward.
Thank you. And just checking on the web, I don't see the, the link to the RCTV Community Needs Assessment. Okay. If you cannot see that link, then you can do more than I can right now.
Okay, so you're stuck, well, apparently stuck. I'm done here, I'll come over and take care of that.
I'll figure it out.
Can I just ask, maybe Steve, you might know? Is the, is the, is the, a lot of folks done it yet, or is it just really small, is it?
Some have done it, they don't make as many as they would like so far.
How many, do you know how many you've gotten, or?
Yeah, from numbers.
I forgot to mention it.
The more we can get, the better.
Yeah, no.
And broaden across the community. If they're able to subscribe to it.
Okay.
Yeah, you have till, I believe, July 30th, 31st.
I believe there's discussion extending that date.
Oh, there is.
Oh, so they're only collecting information until July 31st?
That was the original plan.
It's been out there a while.
Yeah, and we will also need a hold the public here, I'm at the desk, Bob, if that's been scheduled yet. There is. Bob, the public hearing we need to hold for the cable TV renewal, do we have a series of dates?
I don't, Matt would know, I'm not aware of them, so I don't think we have defined them yet.
Is it going to be August, September, do you know?
Not August for sure.
Okay.
I, I didn't even know he was talking about as early as September, last time we spoke, but I'll check.
Okay.
And I have nothing to report. With that, I'll open the floor for public comment. If you'd like to speak, please stand, give your name, and let us know what's on your mind. No, you don't, Bill.
I'll take that. Follow up on town meeting, a couple of issues. Status of Memorial Park and land across the highway. What's happening, if anything?
Well, Bob, in the question of the land across from Memorial Park, there was a discussion two years ago where this very topic came up, maybe it was closer to three years ago. And the question, I think, was to Town Council to research the nature of the original grant and determine.
Is this for the land?
That's Memorial Park.
Of Memorial Park? It's not Oakland?
Those two topics.
Right, I just want to make sure. Okay. The last I knew, we had thoroughly researched that three years ago and knew all the facts we were needing.
I think the action is maybe to bring those facts forward, I knew.
Okay, we have records from, you know, past Board of Selectmen's discussions, I can just reproduce those minutes. And I don't know if, if there's still some unanswered questions, certainly we'll deal with them.
Every night you will see them.
Okay, anytime, if you want to swing by.
Let's put it back, put it to bed once and for all.
Okay.
And on Oakland Road?
Is that possible?
By the way, tell Town Council I won't make town record that, will you?
Oh, Ivory is coming tonight, you can mention it to her.
And on the matter of Oakland Road, I think after town meeting, I don't know of any other activity that's occurred.
I've met with a private party and discussed possible options in redevelopment. I don't know if Andrew has. Certainly nothing formal, you still would need to go through a public process, but I'm just trying to do some due diligence in the background.
Nothing that's been communicated this board?
No, no. And I have nothing to tell you, other than what I just said.
Given what Bob said, the town president has a consult tax property, I believe that is tax property, she can sell it.
That's possible. Yeah, if it all is, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, by the way, it's he now. It's a he now, by the way.
Oh, whatever. That's been hidden off a while.
Yeah.
And the other thing is, you may recall, I made a comment about the so-called cracks in the library wall. Well, they were not, they were indeed cracks, because as I go by there one day, they ground them all up and fill them with epoxy. So whoever told you they were expanding cracks misspoke to you, or lied, whichever way you want to put it. And then they put a nice coating on the whole thing, so it's it.
At the time they started to develop, that's how they reported it to us.
Yeah.
As it continued to develop far more than it should have, that's when they realized we got a problem.
Yeah.
So we, we asked them to fix it.
Is the town paid for that, or is?
No, the contractor ate that. He said it was a bad installation, so if you looked at it, I've only seen the first effort, I haven't seen the completed wall. They did the top, they did the side.
They've done everything.
It should look really nice.
It does.
As, as nice as it can.
I've done up there about every day and it looks nice.
And they said the back had enough, you know, permeable area that it shouldn't be a problem in terms of the wall cracking and moisture getting in there.
This was freezing over the winter?
If it had been left untreated, it definitely would have decayed over time much faster, because moisture would be getting into different cracks, no question.
As you remember, last year was a very hot year, and from my civil engineer grandson, apparently what they did, they showed up with a bad batch of concrete, dumped a lot of water in it to pour, and then everything went, ooh.
They hardened too quickly.
Yeah. No, the water went out of it, it didn't add, that's the problem. Takes twenty-seven days for concrete to cure. And I just want to let you know that whoever told you it was expansion cracks and misspoke.
Thank you.
Is that the way you want to speak?
Thank you. Anything else, Bill?
No, nothing.
Any other public comment? Yes. Hi Vanessa, good evening.
Vanessa Summer of Grant Street. I know that the override survey is on the agenda for later on in the evening before seeing that, but I just wanted to comment to thank you for being, you being open to public comment at the last Board of Selectmen meeting. I know that it can be difficult to strike about between getting it right and getting it done. So I just, I appreciate you being open to comments from those that are knowledgeable in other areas of town, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, I mean, the idea is to gather as much information with as little effort as possible, and, you know, you know, many eyes looking at it, I think it's a better product, we're going to talk about it tonight, and, you know, it probably won't be perfect, we'll probably kick ourselves, maybe we should have asked this question later on, but at a certain point, we just got to.
Yeah. But I just, I want to.
Thank you. And I don't think this survey is the last, I'm guessing, another, for a few months, I would argue. So there being no other public comment, Bob, can you open the door?
Just one thing, I want to let the board know and the community at large know, on October 4th, which is a Wednesday, we're going to have an Economic Development Forum at the library. It'll be downstairs, we'll use the full, large conference room. Over the next month or so, maybe a few weeks, we'll develop an agenda, we have a draft agenda. It's going to be really, it's going to be really interesting. There'll be a couple of other communities coming. We are going to discuss specific projects in Reading. Whether the con, whether the developers come or the owners come to speak of them, we're not sure yet. You know, I can now say that the post office project, which had been sold some time ago, has been approved by all the bodies that need to, up to the point of now they can talk to the town and go through a process, go through CPDC. So they have gotten, Mass Historic was the longest approval process. That'll be one. There's some other downtown properties that have changed hands because of the change in zoning, I assume, and Andrew's right on top of those, we will describe, or he will describe some of those. We're also going to just finally open the door a little bit for the community to see some thoughts down in Walkers Brook. That's still further off, certainly, and the board will have some more discussion about that. But it's going to be a pretty interesting meeting, I think. In addition, sometime either, you know, just before then or then, you'll see a lot of visual work that Jesse and Andrew have both worked on. A lot of that will be the website, which I can't show you right now, and her final report visually is stunning. It's so easy to see, it's so easy to read, it just, it's such a comfortable document, it's really good. Aside from the quality of the work, it's just a good document. It's one of these two-pagers, so you can get a lot of information in front of you on the table at once. So again, October 4th, I would ask that the board, you know, be posted and be able to attend as much as you can. I'm also going to ask the Finance Committee tomorrow night to at least send a few representatives. Because there is a certain amount of finance involved in economic development on the revenue side, we think it'll be seven o'clock at the library.
So that's a Wednesday, Barry?
That is a Wednesday. There's a slight possibility we may open the doors at six, if there's visual things for people to inspect, we don't know that yet.
This will be in the community room, the big community room?
Yes, downstairs in the library.
You expect overflow by any chance, or I guess there's no way to know.
There's really no way to know, but that holds, I believe it's 120 or 25, so that seems okay. It's going to be an interesting meeting, it's not going to be the Red Sox playing, so there's some balance there.
That's a really on level. This board has talked so much about economic development and how it takes time to get the processing right and getting the staffing right and the focus right. This will be largely the first time, maybe not, Andrew's certainly not spoken, but the first time they'll be able to see, I would say, more tangible results and be able to see.
Yes.
The headlights will point out into the future a bit more, so as we get closer, we'll speak more about it, but I'd encourage everyone to mark October 4th in the calendar, and I'm excited. Barry?
I know you're scoping out the agenda, I think it would be really important, helpful, if we can get some members from the development community there. They're the ones who are going to, you know, sort of would look at these projects, scope them, determine, you know, the value of doing things, and, you know, and can talk more about than, you know, than just theory, they can talk about, well, this is what you need to do in order to do, to do this, I mean, more practicality. And I know we're not ready to go out with specific projects, but it would be really helpful to have someone, you know, one or two representatives, if possible, to kind of really help kind of steer some of that discussion and add a lot of color to it, so, you know, it would be nice to kind of, if, if we can, to try to get somebody, or one or two people maybe, from that group.
Yeah, if I might, there will definitely be developers in the audience, some of them will have mustache and glasses and sit in the back.
Right, no, I mean, yeah.
The tricky part is, there are some developers who will have projects in front of CPDC, and by then, they'll be in, in process, and one of them will probably be just about ready. I don't know how willing and they would be and how smart it would be for them to say much in a public meeting, when they're in front of another board, quite honestly.
Right, right.
I think sort of an after-effect, absolutely. For someone that's completed a process, they're done, they're, they're finished, this is what I did or didn't like about my experience in Reading. From, I, I had this discussion with Andrew this morning, I said, will developers come? And he said, absolutely, but most of them want to sit and just listen and observe.
That's true.
And in a sense, this event is, for them to see, is well, is Reading a welcoming community?
Right.
What, what show does Reading put on to make me interested? Andrew's got me here, he's got me interested, he's, some developers, he says he talks to almost every day.
They're always looking.
That just used to drive past Reading, and now they know. They know the whole town, they've driven around, they see opportunities, they like them. You know, the salesman's brought the product as far as he can, now it's our job to.
He's done a very good job of that, I might add.
He has.
The awareness is kind of amazing.
Yeah.
How much percolating interest there is.
They've developed the product, they've done the packaging, now the dogs have to eat the dog food.
Well, no.
Well, we're starting to do the packaging. I mean, starting, yeah.
The marketing group needs to get kicked in now.
I actually think a better idea with the developers is, after that forum, have a focus group with just them.
That's a good idea.
To get their thoughts.
Yeah, I think you're both right, that developers are a really important audience here.
Yeah, and maybe just, you know, obviously, if somebody has want to have a project in town and they want to, the guy sitting next to him is also looking at the same project, they may not want to raise their hand, I get that.
Yeah.
But then, you know, maybe we could, there could be room, or we can invite individuals, members of the permanent building committee, these are guys that have done the stuff too, may, maybe.
Yeah, they'll, they'll be.
In some role, you know, kind of, so that we can kind of separate kind of the theor, you know, you know, that looks great on paper, but you can't build that there, you know?
There's really two audiences for this meeting, maybe more. There's the public, who I desperately want to help to get aware of what we're trying to do and the path we're taking, and at least the early results, to the extent you even want to call them results. And then there's the developers themselves, who you want to be aware of, how we're thinking about it and what role they can play. To your point, Barry, I wonder if there's a way where maybe not a specific developer, but maybe a typical development project, or something that's media enough where Andrew might present it, or another individual might present it, it's not, it need not be a literal development project.
A specific, yeah.
But it's still enough for the public to say, okay, this is the process, this is how it works, this is how it'll play out, plus or minus. Is there, is there a way to give a flavor of that for the public consumption? Short of having a developer stand up and say, this is what?
I think in order for that to make sense, it would have to be on something specific and tangible, not theoretical. So let's, you know, walk through an old project, maybe, I'll try to think of one that is finished, that's relevant. It's going to have to take some thought.
And the good news is we have some time to develop it.
Yeah. Yeah. And, you know, we'll, we'll invite specifically our three elected officials, I haven't told them yet. They were recently just still working on a budget. And I don't know what their interest will be, but I know, and all three of them have said to me in the past, please let me know when you have economic development meetings.
Some of these projects may require some state.
Yeah, Seth Moulton's staff has indicated some interest in the past, there's a fellow we, we know well, it's, that, that will come. The Governor's Office and, you know, the Housing and Economic Development Executive Director have expressed interest in the past, so we'll invite people. I don't want to oversell the event, though, it's, you know, it's a starting point, I guess.
That's why this is almost, I don't want to say educational, but it's informational for folks in the audience, so if you took, I'm just talking a lot now, if you took Thirty Haven and you said, if it was still the Atlantic, we know it's not.
Yeah.
But if it were, this is how you'd basically approach it, in theory, and just, you know, it's completely fictitious, but it's got enough meat on the bones to let people see how it would be constructed.
Well, Jesse asked me a question today via email that, you know, I hadn't really thought about, and I don't know how to answer it, but it would be good if I could. All right, so you improved the downtown years ago. What's the economic development value of that? It's a good question. You know, I'd have to sit down with the assessor, we'd have to look at all the properties on Main Street, try to get some sense of how have they changed over the period of time versus other built, you know, properties in other parts of town. It's not an easy question to answer.
Well, you almost have to go back.
Yeah.
To a time prior to that, take a snapshot of the values, take a, you know, snapshot of the businesses, create an executive summary, and then you frame forward fifteen years, essentially, which is pretty much when that started, I think.
Yeah.
Roughly twelve years ago, probably. Now you look at those values, and you have to discount two and a half, because two and a half is the automatic climb.
We look at them relative to other commercial property, and Reading is the only way I can think of doing it, but whatever we do is not going to be perfect, it's going to be a guess.
No, it's going to be an approximation.
It's an interesting question.
The pace of this stuff, though, is geological, right? In that, you know, you say, okay, we did the downtown, okay? But last year, it was only last year that we redid the zoning.
Right.
That's really going to push.
And there are developments in forty yards.
That was this year.
Yeah, that was April.
I mean, that was months ago.
So, you know, maybe, maybe it took doing the downtown to get the impetus to do the, you know, so, I mean, this stuff, you, you know, fifteen, fifteen years maybe isn't even enough to kind of measure what Jesse was asking.
Unfortunately, in the, as you know, in the planning world, 10 years is tomorrow, or yesterday. And I, you know, I have a hard time having the patience for that, and most people do. So, but it's a, it's a good question, you know, when you do things, you should always be thinking about measuring the results.
So what?
As best you can. Dan?
Just sort of bookend this discussion, Bob, you mentioned the importance of CPDC.
Yeah.
This is our chief regulatory body regarding development, and I believe they are still down to one person.
Oh, okay.
And associate. Yeah, we still, down on ZBA also, zoning, government deals.
ZBA too, I didn't realize that.
I believe so, and Conservation Committee.
Yes, I think someone just left ZBA in the last month or so.
Yep, I think I announced that when we did the appointments.
And, Board of Cemetery trustees, are we still too short?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. We haven't...
I knew it was one.
Two did not reapply, that I know of.
Who had not reapplying?
I could, that could, that information could be out of date, that was a month ago.
Who were they?
Janet.
Janet, or me?
I don't remember who the other one was.
I guess, permissioning a plea to all citizens.
Okay.
Any other comments from the board?
We may have one at 11:00.
Okay.
Any questions from the board or the public? Okay. If not, we'll move on to the next topic, we have a notice to read.
I do. To the habits of the Town of Reading, please take notice that the Board of Selectment will, the Town of Reading will hold a public hearing on July 25th, 2017, in the Selectment's meeting room, 16 Lowell Street, Reading, Massachusetts, to amend the FY18 Non-Union Classification Plan at 7:20 PM. A copy of the proposed document regarding this topic is available in the Town Manager's office, 16 Lowell Street, Reading, Mass, on a Wednesday, Thursday, from 7:30 AM to 5:30 PM, Tuesday, from 9:30 AM, I'm sorry, 7:30 AM to 7:00 PM. It is attached to the hearing notice on the website at www.rittingma.gov. All interested parties are invited to attend this hearing or may submit their comments in writing or by email prior to 6:00 PM on July 25th, 2017, to townmanager@ci.rittingma.us.
Thank you, Dan.
Again, I apologize, I can't show you anything, so you'll have to imagine, in your packet...
Are you just not on the internet, is that what happened?
No, the whole thing is not interested in dealing with me right now. Kinda like my kids some days.
Do you want a copy?
Oh, you can't.
I can't do anything, as soon as I do something, it shuts off.
I've got it here. Do you need it plugged in?
It is plugged in, and it's having, when I call up the internet, or the website, town website, it just black screens. And then when I go to put this thumb drive in, it blacks screens, so it's not happy about something, and then it's trying to diagnose itself, so...
You wanna project on a different screen, or no, you don't think, all right?
I think we'll be okay.
All right.
Iveria might have a challenge in a few minutes, but I'll try to see what I can do. I'm asking the board to add a position in grade F. It's a position that was in the budget, and it was either going to be grades F or G, we hadn't decided until we started interviewing folks. I probably should've come to the board one or two meetings ago to do this, but we haven't yet hired a person, we have gone through the process, we have a candidate. This new position in Gene's department was meant to be someone who could deal with a lot of, or at least some of, the nighttime boards, as well as do, if you will, administrative work during the day. So it's a varied work schedule, and if you don't mind, I would ask you to add the position Administrative Specialist into grade F. When you voted on the classification plan yet, we hadn't completely decided, although I had a pretty good idea this is where it was going, so we didn't do it at that time.
Any questions from the board?
So was this, was this a budgeted position?
Oh, yeah.
So it's in the budget, we...
Yeah, and it's fine, where we're hiring...
This is strictly a classification item.
Yeah, it's, 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 again, in a perfect world, I probably should've brought this to you two or four weeks ago, 'cause I knew by then, I just didn't think of it.
Does this affect any current positions?
No, just, this is a person we're wanting to hire, but we can't do that, not that this is a problem, if someone's available in a month. So it's not a problem, but I better do it now.
Is this analogous to like a Darlene Foley position?
It's, it's, it's a higher position than, let me just make sure before I speak, it's, it's higher than all the administrative assistant positions, because it is meant to work very flexible hours, and if you will, this, and I say this very respectfully, this is the position we scaled down and tried to replace John Fido with. So it was more than a clerical position, but certainly not all the things John brought to the table, to try to get some of our boards integrated and talking to each other by starting having someone that goes to a few of the meetings.
Well, we spent a lot of time last time talking about getting the boards talking to each other.
And specifically, as I understand it, this new person will start with ZBA. Now, ZBA is a board that's never really been on our radar in terms of much support, and they have been swamped in the last two years, and will be for the next two years, on just 40B applications, so we've got something like six passed in the press.
Julie's the one who staffs that generally, right?
No one does.
Oh.
The building inspector, once upon a time, many years ago, used to go to some of their meetings, stopped many years ago. Gene and Julie went to some of the 40B meetings, but not generally.
Oh, so they're not there on a regular...
We have a fair...
We don't have, we have three part-time...
Yeah, we have a fair amount of boards that do not have staff support, there's just, there's no person, there's no position.
Right, that makes sense.
If there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
All right.
Sorry, public comment?
Very good.
Dan?
Who's the Board of Selectmen close the hearing on the FY18 Classification Plan as presented?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Who, Board of Selectmen amend the FY18 Classification Plan as presented?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Four zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
If I could just ask you to take a five-minute recess, I'm gonna attempt to beat this up. We'll, we'll stand recess for five minutes, if you wanna borrow...
Bulka that is liquor licenses, which the board has dealt with a couple of times in the last two years, and I think you're, you're fine with it. Keno licenses will be a new addition a little bit later on. I just wanted to literally, almost like a working group session, go through your current policy and see if there's any areas the board has concerns upon. And I also have some comments from staff.
So what's in front of us is what's there.
Article three licenses should be.
That's what you sent us last week.
Yes, same thing, same exactly.
This is, this is what it is as of now without any changes.
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
I wasn't sure if that.
I've made no suggested changes at all. There's a copy that actually Ivria made some comments on, I think it was last October, sometime in the fall. We'll get to those, whoops, there it goes.
Do you restart?
It's just gone. Yeah, it's off.
I think it just did updates.
What have you been watching, Bob?
Why don't we just proceed with paper?
Okay. I have a copy, I don't have full copies, the board has hard copies hopefully. Yeah, it's rebooting, so we'll see what.
We've all got our computers open, so we're.
Yeah, okay.
We're looking at it.
Let's see. The first question, the fir-, I think everything is fine. Yeah. Fool me once, shame on you.
It's got good sound.
It's great when it works. I feel like I'm in a sitcom at some point. The licenses are fine, 3.1 up until delegation to the town manager, the authority to issue certain licenses. A prior board spoke with a prior town manager about this and never changed the language. They had agreed that that was delegated to him until further notice, and there may have even been a motion to that effect in a meeting 10 years ago or 12 years ago.
But he's not here.
But he's not here, that's not what the policy says, so you should do one of two things. Follow the policy, which I don't have a problem with, and annually tell me whether you will or will not delegate, you know, certain licensing authority to my office, which frankly is mostly Caitlin at this point. Or we have to change the wording of this. I think maybe a better practice is to just do it annually, because that way if something has gone wrong, you're not happy with, you, just like liquor license, you have a chance to take another shot.
So we have the calendar when we do liquor licenses, for example.
It probably should be done then, because I think all of our licenses are on a calendar year, not a fiscal year, I sometimes have to think about that. So it does make sense that either in November, December, when you do liquor licenses, November, or other licenses, December, that you just add this in.
Can we make that change now to run?
Well, absolutely, you don't have to change the policy at all, that's what it says you should do, unless you wanted to add.
I'm not seeing the citation here.
If you look at 3.16, the policy says annually, the practice might be at the same time you do liquor, for example. Which would be fine, I think doing it once a year while we do liquor is fine. Okay.
I like the idea that we take a look at what worked, what didn't work, there's one or two in here that, we should go through it and see what the board thinks, but.
Okay.
Like 3.4, we know that, 3.4, folks have come before us on motor vehicle licensing regards, I think it was fingerprinting and photographing. We don't have a lot of class one, two, or three motor vehicle licenses, and they don't turn over very often, so when it does, it's enough of a special case where I'd be curious to see that, whereas the alcohol, we see it mostly because of the nature of that license. We have like 12 pages of taxi, and I don't think we even have any taxi services anymore in Reading, but be that as it may, Dan?
It's pretty entertaining, actually, if you read that.
Yeah. I have a question regarding taxi and livery vehicles. Is there a definition either at state law or our own bylaw?
It's right here in 3.512, definition of livery.
Well, I'm reading that, and I'm saying, how does that exclude an Uber or Lyft vehicle?
I was gonna ask about that, is that they?
I'm assuming it's not our intent to regulate those vehicles.
Correct, it's not your intent in the policy, and state law prohibits municipalities from regulating Uber, so you don't even really have the ability to.
So if there's an Uber driver that picks up somebody in Reading and does something untoward, there's nothing this board can do to prevent that Uber driver from ever setting foot in Reading again?
I don't want to say that, because there may be other statutes, criminal statutes or other things that we could look to, but the board is precluded by state law from developing a policy that Uber drivers like register and fingerprint or anything that would restrict their ability to operate.
How does that work, Ivria? What, what part of state, it must be fairly recent then?
It is a new law, I think it was 2016, and I don't, that provision was added into the law, because in part Cambridge was trying to regulate Uber drivers differently than taxi drivers, so ended up getting it.
State, okay. Any other questions? The class one, two, three motor vehicles, I'd be curious to always have them come before us, only because it probably is such a unique event, and it's, in my mind, if it's a, one of the automotive dealers, I'd be curious to see them.
I was gonna ask, what is a class one, two, or three license?
Well, let me, let me ask John to clarify, when you say that, you mean first applications or renewals or both?
First applications for certain.
Okay.
And I would say if there's any change of renewal, where the circumstances have changed, if it's.
Change in ownership, you mean?
Either change in ownership, or change in, I guess this is where the subjectivity comes in, if it's, if it's regular and customary, I'd say no, but if it's anything but that, change in ownership being an example, I'd be curious to see that singular one.
The policy that the police have developed is renewals, folks that have been in town for a long time, basically don't hassle them, renew it.
Right.
But to have a careful look at, you know, as best you can just describe it, at situations that change and all new people. I will say though, that we also have a general bylaw that covers this, we, you know, the chief and I, last two chiefs and I have talked about this a lot. I think we may need to go back to town meeting and actually change the bylaw, because it says basically in black and white, you shall every year.
You shall, you shall, you shall, correct.
And as a policy, we don't think it makes sense, and I remember Chief Cormier standing up and explaining why it makes sense, but we don't think it makes sense to fingerprint businesses that have been around for some time every single year.
We've had some visits from those people.
Yes, we have, and we've had some discussions with them.
I caused the chief to come up with a little better strategy.
Yeah, and.
Maybe it doesn't exactly fit what the bylaw says.
And the question isn't, don't, don't never fingerprint them again, because people do things, you know, just because you came into town clean 20 years ago doesn't mean you still are. But he proposed to do it less than annually, so either every two years or every three years, and that's why we just want to have an informal discussion as the computer keeps rebooting.
So can I, class one, two, and three motor vehicle license, what is that?
Used cars.
So like a used car lot?
Could be, yeah.
Repairers, that's what.
Yeah.
Or it could be a body shop that sells cars.
Yep.
So I mean, we have such places.
Anybody that just sells cars, okay.
Could even just sell one car or more than one. Not a private residence, it would be a commercial property. Commercial, yep.
So he needs the license in order to kind of took the car around and show people around?
Exactly, yep. So if you drive around town and look at many of our gas stations, many of them have this, not all, but if you just drive around Main Street, there are cars for sale, used cars for sale, in what looks like a repair shop, but it's doing both.
And is class one an example of a full-fledged automotive dealer, or no, that's still a repair facility? For some reason I had in my head that class one was the likes of a Honda Galera, something like that.
Yeah, I think so.
Class two might be a used car dealer that had a smaller lot size.
I know at one point there's a number, how many cars that are on a lot for sale.
Yeah, I'd have to double check, but I know that they, you know, it starts at like the lowest, like a repair shop selling a few cars, and then to like a used lot, and then, you know, the full-fledged dealer.
Steve, you had a question?
Yeah, I think it's class one is a new color, and class two is used, and class three is a common view of a car dealer.
Yeah, I think you're right.
That's right.
What do you want?
So to clarify, if it was, just to re-up, you know, the, the language here says shall issue a license once a year, if it was no changes, it would be issued, I delegate that to the town manager, I'd be inclined to do it, if there was a change, I'd bring that singular case forward, and just for conversation, it might be an ordinary conversation and we're done, but how does the board feel about that or any other topic here?
Are we kind of going along?
Yeah.
Yeah, and just, just to be clear, we're discussing ideas and thoughts, not wording.
Correct.
We'll work on that and come back to you.
Correct, this is more, do we want to delegate it, and if so, do we want to delegate everything, and if not, what are the exceptions?
I think common sense dictates that you do a lot of delegating here.
Exactly.
Because.
Daytime government.
Yeah, I mean.
With the exception of the liquor, it's.
Yeah, so the liquor is a different, you know, it's a different thing, but the rest of this stuff, the more that we can delegate and still fulfill our fiduciary responsibilities, we should do it.
I'm in the same place, yeah. You see any exceptions, John, to delegation by the poll?
I looked, and I, you know, I read this thing all the way through, and I just, my first observation is delegation is the order of the day, I saw nothing wrong with what was going on here, and we should do it. The second thing was the comedy show about taxis.
Seven pages.
Pretty, I was glad to know that I get, that, you know, the selectmen can get people over 60 a discount on the taxi fares doing business in Reading, which is, I mean, has it been 20 years since we've had a taxi stand?
It's been more than 10, that's all I know.
But there are a number of Reading businesses that will pick you up and take you to the airport that's not a taxi stand.
Livery.
Livery, so there are, there are some.
It's two, two I'm aware of, you know, more than two?
Yeah. They're not taxis.
No.
They're not taxis, no, you have to make an appointment.
Car service.
The only other comment I had, which was more of a technical one, in 7.3.2, it speaks to entertainment devices, but.
Oh, hang on, you're way ahead of me.
Sorry, not 7, 3.7.
Okay.
.2, it talks about entertainment devices, but in the following 3.8, it speaks to automatic amusement devices, what is the difference?
All right, that, that is an area I wanted to spend some time on.
Like pinball machines?
It might be, but they're so similar, I can't tell the difference.
Technology has evolved a lot faster than bureaucracy, not surprisingly. Ivria and I have not really had this discussion, but I almost want to take this apart and start all over of both sections. I'll give you some examples, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to talk about stuff in public, but there's a new business going into town down in Walkers Brook that could have anywhere from one to, I don't know, 100 entertainment licenses, depending on how we interpreted this policy. What I've agreed with, with the landlord for the first, you know, tail end of this calendar year is one, and then, you know, we may, and I said very clearly, you know, we may have a new policy, and it may, you know, instead of $50 for the rest of the year, it could be a lot more next year. It's, it's just a different kind of business. I'll, I'll tell you about some of the conversation that my peers have, I, I won't say the towns, but one of our contiguous towns has a restaurant that we have that has those electronic checkout devices at your table, that also have games for the kids. Are those an entertainment device for 50 bucks each, and then you multiply 50 by every table. One town around us has interpreted that way and is having some legal discussions with the entity, I have chosen to say, no, that's foolish, that's, that was never the intention of this policy.
You know, that's like a revenue grab.
Absolutely.
In my opinion, you know, I think that's.
I don't like nickel and diamond people.
I think we should have fees in the way that they, which is reasonable and what makes common sense.
So that, that's why I suggest honestly that both these sections, you just let us work on a complete overhaul, I don't know if you have up-to-date policies or other towns?
Yes, we've been working on entertainment license policies for many communities, it's a, definitely, it's a hot button issue right now, and I would advise that the board authorize Bob in our office to take a look at this in more detail.
What was the original 10 of the difference, I understand that currently this kind of technology is overtaken, and what was the original 10?
TV, TV screens primarily.
What was the other then, if one was TV screen, the other was a pinball machine kind of thing?
I'm trying to think.
Pac-Man?
Yeah, exactly.
And there are additional entertainment licenses.
10 hours doesn't exist anymore.
I see.
And there are also two additional types of entertainment licenses that are not reflected in your policy, so like a pool table, there's a specific license for that, which isn't reflected here.
How about foosball?
That would fall under.
Air hockey.
Yeah, so.
They have a foosball in New York now.
Yes, I know, I know we do.
We have places that have those.
Right. So I think there's some tweaking that we can do here to make it come into alignment with the law as well.
And then there are licenses for live entertainment as well.
Right, so the way your policy is drafted, it seems like it just applies to devices, but the statute that's referenced here actually applies to both live entertainment and devices, and then there's another whole set of, there's another statute, which isn't referenced in your policy, that deals with like events like carnivals, so we can make sure that it's broad enough to cover all of those.
Is there some obvious connection between live events and devices that I, that they were in the same section?
It's entertainment, that's the only.
That's all.
It's just that they're entertaining.
And live means like a concert.
Exactly, and they're regulated by where the event is.
Bun Raddies has a guitar player that comes in.
Okay.
John?
I think that my review of these is that they're out of date, and I really think we could spin in circles only to come back to you to say, we, you know, did the music stop at the right place, and did we sit down correctly?
We have a license for it.
You know, the chances of us doing that are slim. I just think, you know, you said a minute ago, I would prefer that we turn this over to you guys to come back with an up-to-date finished product, recommended finished product for us to look at, because otherwise we're gonna.
No, I agree.
We're gonna circle this thing.
I agree, the other thing is, I'm not personally interested in nickel and diming members of the community, I mean, there may be the means to do it, but there's no, there's no value served in my mind in doing so.
Well, that sample that Bob brought up is just.
Although, I mean, you know, there is a difference between, you know, the iPad at, at Applebee's, right, there's 50 of them, and then an arcade with 50 machines, I mean, I would look at that as a difference.
If you've ever seen a grand, a grandchild on one of those things, I'm not sure who's making more money.
I know. But at least it's keeping the grandkid quiet.
In either instance.
There's a couple of different fee structures that we've seen certain communities use, so we can put forth a couple options, and, you know, we can talk about what's gonna fit Reading's needs best.
Has state law kept up with the proliferation of technical devices?
Not in this area.
I mean, we have them on gas pumps still.
Yeah.
Well, your pump up, you can watch it.
Yeah, well, the entertainment laws.
Right here.
Yeah, you bring your own device now, right, we just bring wireless, you can play on your own device.
So what do you do with those?
Right, so the entertainment laws only apply if there's entertainment in an establishment with a common victualer's license, so if you're going to a restaurant, or if you're paying to see the entertainment, so that sort of stuff is restricted.
So when you have like at, they sometimes have like trivia night at one of the bars.
Good question, yeah.
Is that covered, I mean, that's entertainment, someone's coming in and doing it, I don't know if.
It's a good question.
Coin of the realm is passing hands, but.
So in some communities, they are requiring an entertainment license for that, other communities have chosen not to, we can talk about that and see what fits Reading, you know.
This is one of those things that will never end if we keep it on.
Yeah.
I just have one question, 3.3 I think it is, Ped, do Peddlers still exist?
Absolutely.
Yep.
I mean.
We have hot dog man over in Wakefield.
We need to do it.
It would show up in great number in the Fall Street Fair if you didn't have this section.
Do we, how many have we issued, do you know, how many?
You usually get one a year at the Friends and Family Day.
Oh, that's like to do the.
The lady that comes and does the balloon animals and.
Oh, okay, so we have one.
While we're on, I know we're not wordsmithing, but there's a little discontinuity here, we, in some of these Peddler's license conditions, we say minimal impact, and others we say no negative impact.
Okay.
For instance, 7 says Peddlers usually may have no negative impact on retail, well, how do you, I mean, why don't we say minimal there? It'd make much more sense.
So I don't think we need a motion, but I'm in favor of having.
Well, I, I still have a few more questions on sections to ask you, if you don't mind. So 3.7 and 3.8, that's, that's ours, how about 3.9? The general bylaws do prohibit retail sales before 6:00 AM. I haven't heard a complaint for a long time, knock on wood, from the general public, we only have a handful that are asking.
And don't they come for a variance to us?
They've come to you, yes.
And it's done yearly, isn't it?
I wouldn't ever suggest the town manager do that, they need to come to you.
I think that's, I do think that needs to stay with us, just because we've found in the past.
Yep.
Coming with us has raised certain issues with the public, which were legitimate issues, and we were able to work them out.
Right, okay.
Where there's been a crowd, it's usually been on this topic, and it's actually mostly had a favorable outcome, right?
I think each time, it's, it's had a negotiated outcome that everybody's happy.
The value is in the process of working that through for everyone to see, that'd be another one.
So, so leave that with us.
Right, we'll, if we have to wordsmith it, we will, it looks long to me, but it, it's not broken, I guess is the point. 3.10, that's a hot topic.
Actually, that was another one I wanted to suggest come forward, only because every, that's another one where every instance is gonna be different, the outline, the number of tables, the time of day, the intrusion on the space, that's probably another one that's gonna create a lot of public interest in folks coming in and saying, I'd like to say something for or against. It doesn't happen that often, but.
That could get bigger rather than smaller.
Yes.
With our change in zoning.
Yes.
And likely will.
Although we might want to make, you know, when it goes before, you know, CPDC, you know, because a lot of the restaurants that have outdoor seating are not on the sidewalk, they've got dedicated spaces like.
True.
Bun Raddies and the, I forget, the old Grumpy Doils.
Built more than made.
Built more than made, they have outdoor seating, but it's not impeding the sidewalk.
But this is specifically on sidewalks.
Right, so I mean, you know.
Like D'Amico's or.
Yes.
D'Amico's is on the sidewalk, and I think also the yogurt place.
Orange Fleet was.
Zenga.
Dan?
When we require professionally drawn plans, that, that is an imposition on the applicant, that they need to retain the services of someone that will draw them up, is, there's something maybe short of that we could do for a seating plan, doesn't require a professionally drawn, are you hesitant to relax that?
I would be hesitant to relax that if alcohol was being served, I'd want a thorough review, but other than that, I don't see the problem. You know, you're gonna have handicapped accessibility issues if you don't get measurements exactly right, but do you really need an architect for that, I don't know.
Do you have alcohol being served on public sidewalks?
We, we had one down on Haven Street that was, yes, not on Main Street.
A plan.
Plan drawn to scale, I mean, that would imply it needs to be.
Exactly.
It's item 3 under application for outdoor seating.
Yep. Yeah, I, I guess professionally drawn could also be in how you interpret it.
What does professionally drawn mean, does that mean a PE, does that mean somebody?
Well, that's, at the extreme, that's what I would say it means, yes, is an architect.
Do we need to put them through that expense?
I don't think so.
If it's proportional and it's complete, now, now you have to judge what that means.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, if someone wants to throw two tables in front of a store on Main Street.
You have to iron it, you're there.
On the other hand, they bring in a paper napkin with a crayon.
Well, they have.
Sometimes it just, that's, that's all you need.
Look.
I think you can leave this to common sense.
All right. Yeah, I, I mean, let's not impose excessive cost to these people.
I'm, I'm exactly there.
And the thing is too, we also don't want to discourage, I mean, the whole idea is creating life downtown, there's a couple of seats out there serving coffee, I don't want to discourage that.
Bob, did you have any other areas you wanted to highlight?
Well, A-frames, the last one, I think that's 3.10, let's find it.
Sandwich boards?
Yeah, you saw that presentation today, Barry, and noticed there's not a lot of A-frames, 3.11. That's something the town has taken quite seriously in the past, and certainly my predecessor did, and, you know, there's, there's two sides to everything, but the side to enforce this is handicapped accessibility more than anything else, safety. There's other reasons to do it too, optics, you know, desirability, whatever, but that, that's my reason. This is another thing that the town can't possibly proactively enforce or police, we can only deal with people who complain and then do the best we can. There are always going to be businesses that put out an A-frame sign on a Friday night and take them in on a Sunday night, and there's no opportunity for the town to have really done anything unless it has caused an issue of public safety.
Any sense of how popular, I just have never paid attention, are these widely popular?
Peter used to have Gene go out on December 31st with him and go to every establishment that had an A-frame sign permit and inspect the joint for every possible violation they could have on anything. I've chosen to use my New Year's Day differently. I think this is another common sense thing, let's use our A-frame signs with common sense, I don't think this community generally, first of all, the sign pollution in this town is very good, you drive around almost any other town, the signage is worse, and my tastes aren't particularly good, but I can still tell you that. My tolerance for more signs in this town would be high, I don't know that that's the general perception of the town, however.
Isn't there like one on Haven Street right now?
Probably.
It seems like, it just, I, I don't go up and down.
An A-frame, you mean?
Yeah. I don't go up and down and say, oh, what a eyesore, or, oh, what a, I look at it and go, oh, there's a sale.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, I can get two bottles for the price of one.
Yeah, the, the issue again becomes if, if there's a sidewalk of a certain size and the A-frame signs in the way, and you can't get a wheelchair by, that's a problem. If it just takes a little bit of dodging around.
There's three ifs in that statement, too.
But the way this policy is written and was enforced was fairly strict in the past.
Would you propose to simplify it?
It depends on your appetite, but I, I certainly can come back with Gene's help and simplify it greatly, this is another issue that, that causes undue discussion with business owners that's really not terribly valued.
Operative common sense.
Exactly.
Look under size and location, look at the bullets under 7, maybe, shall be, must be, shall be, must be, must be, shall be, maybe, must be.
Needs an overhaul. Also, this Supreme Court ruling, didn't they rule out any discrimination on basis of use?
As content as it's.
We have, well, number 14 says political statements or messages are prohibited, can you put that in there anymore? I wouldn't necessarily want to see them, but can you restrict them that way?
We would want to review this to make sure it's in conformity with the new.
Just one example.
I'd be fine at delegating that in entirety, unless there was some uproar, in which case it would come back.
However, I mean, honestly, does it need to be 16 sections to this thing?
That's what I meant.
Come on!
It's overregulative.
28, John, you forgot the last page.
Oh, God almighty.
No, there can't possibly be a need for that, it just can't.
Well, that's for 50 bucks a year.
25 for renewal, it's only 50 the first year.
Not to mention, look, we're working hard with rezoning.
Yeah.
And, you know, we have a person in place that is being paid to sell us to the outside world. Come in and look at this thing, and you go, really?
Yeah.
With that dimension, I think in general, one of the hardest things to do in any, in any business, but I think especially in government, is retool and declutter. What don't we need to do, and how do we reorganize, and our bylaws and our policies sometimes take years to catch up, this is an opportunity.
They try to cover every contingency, and then, you know, six months. They try to cover every contingency and then, you know, six months down the road, it's now, it's now obsolete. There's something new came.
And I think we need to, we need to get in step with the fact that we're in a dynamic world that changes rapidly. And to try to overregulate everything, as Barry points out, to, you know, button everything up in every eventuality is, I think is ludicrous. And it sends a very bad message, you know, to people that we're trying to attract here.
What recourse is there if, if we say, even if we left it alone and we approved it and there was an objection unrelated to handicap access? And, and it was material, it was an oversight on our part. Is there any recourse or no? You wait until the next year and you take it up? It's like hypothetical with a lot of ifs.
So if we've issued a permit and someone objects to the fact there's a sign for certain reasons.
Or there is legitimately a problem.
Well, if they're following your policy, the objection doesn't matter, if you will. If they've thought of something we didn't think about in the policy that might be legitimate, just bring it back to the board and say, look.
That will.
Someone puts up a good point. Probably, yeah.
And you know, having twenty-eight things is not going to change that.
No, it makes it worse.
And as soon as we do that, someone will come out with one of those A-frame things that's electronic that change.
The dancers in the sidewalk or something.
What's hanging, so it doesn't touch the sidewalk.
So, you know.
And it's painted with a laser, so there's not even.
Retirement work.
Used to be the sandwich board had a guy attached to it.
That's right.
Are those regulated? Dan and I are, take that on as a retirement income project.
So the last section I wanted to ask you about. Air, Airbnb.
Oh, boy.
You know, is there any appetite of the board to go down that path? That's a question we do get every couple of weeks.
We have, we have applications.
I don't think we have any policy or any ability to do anything with that right now.
Is there any state language that would restrict?
Not currently, no.
I'll tell, it, it is, from what I know about Airbnb and where it is in places in, 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 in other places. Reading is a prime location for.
And we have a hotel tax. We don't have a hotel, but we have a hotel tax.
But that can only be imposed.
Ready.
So just a few points on Airbnb. There's a couple of different ways to regulate it. One is through general bylaws and one is through zoning. So there's a lot of complicated issues associated with both of those mechanisms. And I think Ray and I were talking about this and, you know, I think it would, if the town and the board does decide that they want to look at the options, it would be a good idea to have our office kind of explore them in a little bit more detail before we present to, to you what would be best.
I think it, from, for a variety of different things, from, from selling the town to revenue to just putting us on the map. It's also helps people who might be struggling in their homes to make some additional money. I, I think we should definitely look at this. I, I think it would be, it's happening all around us. For us to say, no, we're not going to look at it, just think school.
Okay, and it will probably be multiple conversations. I think it's a longer discussion.
Are you seeing some of your other clients addressing this?
Some of our other clients have talked about it. No one's taken the step to actually implement something, but communities have investigated and kind of looked at different options.
You get onto Boston or Cambridge, there's nothing there?
They've definitely started. Boston has a lot of regulation right now. And so some of our other communities have thought about prohibiting it. And so that doesn't seem right off the bat, the way Reading wants to go. So I think it's just going to be a little bit different for each.
So if I wanted just to open up my home for an Airbnb, there's nothing in town in Reading can say that I can't do that.
Depends on what your zoning is. So if you're not arguably, it's a commercial use of your property.
I'm in a residential.
Right, so arguably.
Depends if we know or your neighbors let us know.
In fact, it could be happening right now.
Absolutely. Wouldn't be surprised at all.
Now, doesn't zoning then get in the way of anything else we do for the same reason?
Right, that's why I think it'd be good to delegate this to us and give us the authority to kind of explore it a little bit more.
One thought is to treat it under the guise of an accessory apartment.
That's one option.
Special case of an accessory apartment.
Right, so that's one option. Some communities have looked at that if there's a standalone structure on the property, that that structure could be used for Airbnb, but not a room in a home. So I think, you know, like I said, there's a lot of options here.
Boy, technology's really made it complex.
Yeah.
Well, it's surely better, but complex.
It is hard to know what should be, what should we be ready for? What's next? I don't know.
Well, the thing is that, you know, we'll just deal with it as it comes. I mean, we don't have to.
That's why I think your amusement, you know, electronic device stuff, that's important. That's all changed and that's going to continue to change. As I thought about it and talked about it with staff, I couldn't come up with any other wide areas to add to your license policy other than the ones we've discussed, other than Keno, which is the next agenda. Sorry, thank you. I have a good, clear understanding of sort of where you want to go on some of these. We'll come back to you. The Airbnb discussion will probably involve other staff coming to you and having a discussion, public safety being one of them.
Nobody's advertising in Reading at the moment.
I know. Come to Reading, we were just kidding. In front of you, I am sorry, I can't show it, is the town of Reading Keno procedures. It's just a two-page draft. If the public's interested, I have extra copies here. And I'll turn this over to Irvia. I don't know much about Keno other than I did get on the state's website and see what our surrounding communities did in terms of lottery, Keno to go and Keno. And if you look at North Reading, I was a little surprised, although maybe I shouldn't have been, that ninety percent of the Keno licenses are on Route twenty-eight and there's a couple in other parts of town. So they're heavily trafficked areas.
Quite a number of them.
And virtually everyone that has a lottery license has Keno. I couldn't think of or couldn't identify more than one or two that didn't in North Reading. So even though you've only seen, you know, a handful of interests, I think you should discuss this as if it's going to be a widely used thing. And as I understand it from Irvia, there's two types of licenses, if you will, and I'm sure she'll get into that, how the state sees them.
So the state issues Keno licenses. It's not a license that the Board of Selectmen has the authority to issue. So start there, just sort of with the ground. There are, I guess we could call them two different types of Keno licenses. A lottery agent, that's an establishment, generally they're package stores, so hold a section fifteen, package store license to sell alcohol. Will obtain, will become a lottery agent and they can sell different types of lottery products, one of which is Keno or Keno to go. So every time the state lottery commission receives an application from a lottery agent for Keno, they're going to send that application to the Board of Selectmen of the municipality in which the locate, the establishment is located. And the sta- and the, and the municipality has twenty-one days to object to the issuance of the lottery, of the Keno license to the lottery agent. If during that twenty-one day period, the board does object, then the only way the state could issue the license is if they find that issuance is in the public interest. So there's a process there where the locality does have some ability to object. The other type of Keno licenses are issued to restaurants. Most of them have a section twelve liquor license and the way the statute is written is a little different. The board is not notified of the application, nor are they given an opportunity to object. However, in practice, the lottery commission does in fact notify boards and allows them an opportunity to participate in the process, but it's not built into the statute in the same way.
Is that to say practically speaking, from what you discovered, they're treated identically, although the statutes read differently?
So I had a few conversations with individuals at the state. This is the first community that I've dealt with Keno. We don't have, we haven't experienced it in other communities, so I can't say from experience, but according to the individuals I spoke with at the commission, that's what they tend to do. So what we've, in the, in the policy that I've, I've provided to you, I've.
Stop you there for a second. Now, are convenience stores treated any differently than either of those two?
So convenience stores would become a lottery agent and then they would, they would obtain the Keno license in the first process that I talked about.
So it would be just as though they were a package store, but, you know, in this case, they don't happen to have a liquor.
Right, so a lottery agent can have, can be just a regular convenience store.
We have many such lottery agents, right?
Right, you do, correct.
Yeah.
Many of which are providing Keno to go, so that's where you buy the ticket and then you chuck it on your phone or on a computer later. So if those, if those lottery agents that are currently operating Keno to go want to operate Keno, they would apply to the state and the state would notify you. You would have twenty-one days to object if you wanted to and then the state would either issue the license or hold the hearing. And it's, what was really interesting for me in the discussions with the state is that this is, it's an age, a state agency, but it's a business for them. So, you know, they look at it and they say, does it make sense from a business standpoint to have?
They have the right to reject.
Exactly, right. So. So what some communities do is when they remove the blanket objection to Keno, like Reading did, they contact the state and they say, well, there are a few conditions that we would like to see. Obviously, the state doesn't have to follow that. But some conditions that the woman I spoke with talked about were making sure that all of the monitors face inward so that individuals don't sit in the parking lot. So that's one that we could recommend that the state incorporate into any license that's issued here. There may be others that the board could think of and we can definitely talk about them, but that was the one that was brought to my attention.
Is there anything in there that says proximity to a school or a church or, you know?
There isn't anything built into the statute. The regulations also don't contain anything like that. So if Reading, if the board makes a determination that it's not in the public interest to have it within so many feet of a school or a place where children, you know, typically congregate.
There's a congregation.
Right, we can request that the lottery commission take that into consideration. And so the policy, the way I drafted it, is in the application, I put a provision where applicants for Keno need to submit the application to the board as well. So that will help in a situation where the commission maybe forgets to notify the town. At least we'll have a copy of the application and we can communicate with them. And then in section five, we have the basic conditions. So this is what I was talking about. We can make some suggestions to the lottery commission about what we believe would serve the public interest here in Reading. Like I said, you know, facing the monitors inward, making sure that it complies with local zoning, maybe a certain distance from a school or park. But obviously, everything is up, you know, the board should feel free to discuss what they think is best.
Is there any limitation to those two types of businesses you described earlier, hypothetically, if a gas station that sells, you know, sundries?
Yeah.
Could they do it as well?
So a gas station could apply to become a lottery agent.
Same, same path.
Right, and then once they're a lottery agent, then they can sell the various products.
Again, have such businesses in town.
You know, where would they sit? I mean, it's like, that's, that's the other.
Well, lottery agents can sell anything from a scratch ticket to Keno, to Keno tickets. So just because a lottery agent is permitted to sell scratch tickets, doesn't mean they would be able to obtain a Keno license. One requirement that the commission speaks about is that having seating. So they're not going to issue a Keno license to establishment that doesn't have adequate seating.
And some of them, you know, combination gasoline convenience stores have space to do such a thing if they wanted to do it.
What does adequate seating mean?
Good question. Whatever the commission deems in their interest to be adequate. They look at this as a, a product that they're selling. So it really depends on the si- size of the establishment. They'll come out and do a site visit and they'll make a determination.
I mean, like, so a convenience store that has like two or three seats with a couple of monitors wants to do Keno, but it's in a strip mall that has somewhat limited parking. The other business owners, you know, who rely on that parking turning over for their customers might object or have a problem because some guy is sitting there for an hour and a half playing Keno.
Right.
So, you know, that becomes more of a local concern than it is for the state. State wants to sell licenses. You know, we want to make sure that, you know, that it's not encumbering any other businesses. So.
Right.
Would we have the ability then, or could we write it in here that, you know, I noticed something here about public hearings? Can we require anybody that wants a Keno license, we do a public hearing and we then ask these questions, you know, you know, is it, you know, so that other people can then come and say, listen, that's great for them, but it doesn't help me.
Right, so for the two types of Keno licenses that I talked about, the first type that goes to lottery agents, the package stores, the convenience stores. If, if the board is going to object to that license within the twenty-one day period, they have to hold a public hearing. So the reason that it, that you saw that requirement here is that that's the only process. If the board objects without a hearing, the commission won't view it as a valid objection.
So we have to object first.
In a meeting.
To just to get the hearing.
Oh, no, sorry.
I mean, I'm just, I'm sort of thinking out loud. So we have to kind of raise our hand and say, we object to kind of stop the clock a little bit. So then in order to have the hearing, to gather the evidence for us to decide whether or not, you know, we think this is a good use, as opposed to, I mean, I don't want to object first. I want to be able to, you know, okay, you have a hearing, this is fine, nobody, you know, it doesn't impact on any other businesses, this is good for the store owner to say, okay, this is great, we have no objections. So is that?
So unfortunately, there's no way to stop the clock. You have to object within twenty-one days. So that means within that twenty-one day period, you receive the application, you receive notice of the application and you have to hold a hearing. And then you have to have your hearing, you have to make a decision. And if you decide to object, you have to send your notice to the commission that you're objecting within that twenty-one day period. It's a really tight clock.
So, so operationally then, if we wanted to have some type of a say or some type of kind of a vetting, we have to automatically object to every application, just so that we can get the people in here in time to just gather the information to make a determination?
No, you don't actually have to object right away. What you need to do is Bob will receive notice of the application. You schedule a hearing on the application. The applicant comes in, you have those discussions you were talking about. And if at the end of that hearing.
Oh, okay, yeah.
You decide that it's not a good application.
And you object.
Right.
Okay.
But your app.
It makes more sense. You can't sit on it.
Right.
No, that's.
Application comes in.
Well, that's, that's, that's good. I think it's.
Because it's twenty-one days.
Twenty-one days, so it's a really short time because you need to have, the hearing needs to close, you need to vote, you need to draft your written decision and that written decision needs to go to the state within twenty-one days.
So even though it's tight though, at least it's not forcing us to object to everything first.
Correct.
Before we even.
Hearing for everything first.
Right, yeah.
Which is kind of, you know, there are not so many that that would be a confirmed.
And there's, there's a couple of other options. One is that you could have a hearing on every single application or you could delegate the authority to Bob to make an initial decision as to whether to schedule a hearing or not. Some communities do.
That was going to be my question, whether the board wanted to, in the policy, have some description of when a hearing would be called or not, or just leave it to them.
So you have one, in your example, Barry, there's one such place that could be categorized as a strip mall in Reading that I can think of.
Yep.
And I, I think that's it, one. And there are three businesses in that, you know, in that group. So, I mean, if you wanted to have a hearing on that one, fine. I mean, it strikes me that most of the people that are going to be making these applications are going to be doing business pretty much the same way they've always done business. They've added another product line essentially is what they've done. Almost every one of them with, potentially with maybe one exception that I can think of, your strip mall exception. Have, you know, are they either on their own premises or there's already, you know, parking regulations in effect in and around their businesses, you know, for turnover, for example. You know, Dan, you're here. I think you've got, you've got parking spaces in front of your business that are already regulated to turn over, to protect you and the other businesses so that.
I also have some parking behind my store for customers.
So I, I, I guess what I'm saying is I hear you, you know, I hear what you're saying, Barry, about the ability to be able to weigh in as needed, but I hesitate for us to overthink this, you know. I mean, pretty much these guys are, I mean, I like the idea of the screens in your.
Right. The only difference, the only difference here on this product is that it's, it's not a buy and go. It's a buy and stay.
Right.
You know, if they have it at a, at a restaurant or, no, we're not, we're not, actually, this doesn't come into the pour, establishment pouring.
No.
It's, it only deals with. It only deals with, uh, right, so in those cases, they already, you know, people are already staying. This is the one where the impact is on parking, really. I mean, that's, you know, that parking-
As I said, I think there's only one place where there's shared parking, and you already can't park there.
The more operative question is, I think you're not going to notice the issues on day one, you're going to notice it on day 361, in which case the license is already issued, you can't pull it, you're done.
Right, but then, you know, there's a renewal, these things we do all the time, so.
I wanted to ask Avery that question, where the state's the licensing authority, what are the grounds for not renewing a Keno license? Because the board may have input again, but the state may or may not care.
There's nothing built into the statute that gives municipalities the authority to participate in that process.
So our only chance to weigh in is in the beginning.
Sort of sounded like, unless there's a real problem.
But even then.
And a real problem doesn't mean parking.
Well.
Something much worse.
So there's no licensing element that we play in after the initial, so there's really no constructive way if there is a problem of it to have a constructive engagement.
Well, every one of these places has a business license that we issue or don't issue every, every, I don't know if it's every year, but.
Depends. If they have an alcohol license, yes, absolutely. Common vic license, yes, otherwise not necessarily. Town clerk may issue a business certificate or whatever.
I mean, how many do we expect, you know, to actually apply?
North Reading is somewhere on the order of 20 plus.
I think in the beginning, you're going to have a handful.
I could see three to four in the first year and then maybe-
A PNS for sure.
One or two a year after that. Who knows where the ceiling is. Now, yeah.
Where are you stuck, Barry?
No, I'm not stuck. I think, I, I'm not, I think it's, I have no objection to Keno or no objection to any, you know, a product that people want. I just think that it, you know, if it's, if it's doing something that will, um, sort of impact the neighbors, it's something that we should have some type of a say over. And really, the only way to do it is when they initially come in, because really after that, it's done. And if it's three or four, does it hurt to kind of just, you know, come in and don't call it a hearing? It's a casual conversation. You know, maybe we have to make it a hearing so that there are people that are in the neighborhood that have some questions, that then it becomes a conversation, and we say, great, bless it and move on, you know. I just don't want to, I, I just don't want to give out a license and then find out that, you know, and then, and then, you know, six months later, the place is packed because the neighbors are upset about this, that, or the other, and we didn't look at it. That's-
First of all, we don't give out the license. That's number one.
All we can do is object.
Or, or we-
All we can do is, is, is raise our potential objection. So we don't, I mean, we've now lifted the obstruct, we've lifted the iron curtain.
Right, right.
Okay, so that's been lifted. So going forward, we can object on a case by case basis for a reason. When you stop to think about who would potentially use Keno, and you talk about the neighbors, are you talking about the commercial neighbors or are you talking about the residential?
Oh, probably both, I mean.
There are no residential neighbors, really. I mean, who are the residential neighbors?
I mean, if there's like within, you know, a three or four block area around, I mean, I, I don't really know where these are going, so.
That's the problem, is we don't know what's going to happen, and by the time you do, it'll probably be too late, and so your best bet is to try to talk to the-
Let's not forget that one of our goals in, in our earlier discussions was to try to, in the case of a number of businesses here in town, we're trying to give them another opportunity to succeed.
Absolutely, no, no, no.
So, you know, if they are packing the house, God love them, that's what they, you know, that's what they want to do.
No, but, but if they're packing the house and the guy next door is inconvenienced, you know, that's, that's, that should be a concern of ours. And, and I'm not saying it will, I just don't want to, I just don't want to give up our, uh, our one chance to kind of, um, you know, ask those questions and, and get those reassurances because, you know, obviously, you know, we represent everybody and sometimes there's conflicts. I, I can't envision too many of them here, but i- if we sort of give up our right to sort of, to hold a hearing, just essentially to have people have a conversation so that we feel happy, the neighbors feel happy, the owner feels happy, you know, we've done our due diligence, we've done our job, and hopefully, everybody's happy.
We could clearly, you know, application comes in and Bob could schedule it, would have to schedule it.
Next meeting it.
Next meeting.
It may not always fit.
And if we just did that as a matter of course, what the public needs to understand is, we are not issuing or denying this license. It is not in our purview. And, you know, I, I think we could create a false impression with the public.
But we're, we're doing a due diligence.
Okay.
You know, I mean, that's, I mean, and, and, and that could be a five minute conversation, but, you know, we've satisfied that part of it, given people the opportunity to weigh in.
But if you call for a public hearing, it's a public hearing. So now you have the expense of the public hearing, whatever that is, I know that there's an expense involved every time, and then you also open the hearing, and I, I don't know what the expectations are going to be of those people that come in.
Well, we just tell them.
I don't know how Keno works, but typically, I get legal documents that are dated as long as a week to 10 days since they were legally sent. I don't know how that'll play into the 21 days.
We're supposed to send it by certified mail?
That should help. But we get different legal documents that are not right away. Well, and, you know, to the extent the board meets every two weeks, this probably works most of the time, but it will not work all the time, or you may have to be called for a special meeting just to-
Yeah, I mean, that's admirable, I mean, that's kind of-
Is there any difference in Reading with our Friday closure and the way it's got, is it business days within the town or business days period?
Probably calendar days.
It's calendar days.
You know, the other thing the board can do is, is delegate it, let's all learn together. Maybe one does get by.
I'm for that personally.
I, I, you know, I, we can't possibly predict everything.
No, I know.
I'll, you know, I'll listen to all of you, and if there's any certain types of things you want me to watch out for, I will.
Well, yeah, again, I, I'm, I'm not trying to be disruptive. I'm just, I'm just, you know, we're doing, we're opening this up, it's new, we don't know how it's going to go, certainly want to help out our business owners, but, you know, there's the unintended consequences, we talk about that all the time.
Dan.
And I just don't want to give that up.
We must have some pretty good operational history through North Reading. Are we aware of any problems they've had in?
I've never asked, I will. We can ask tomorrow. They're coming in.
Interesting to know how much business we've lost to North Reading over the course of a period of time that we've had the iron curtain now. I would venture a guess that it's large.
I would also note that a number of our convenience store owners have been impacted by recent decisions by town boards regarding products they can no longer sell, so, you know, flavored tobacco products being one of them.
I view this as a way to make up for some of that.
Well, this should be independent, I understand it may make it up, but this is really an independent decision.
It is, but I think we should take it into consideration.
The one operative question for the board is the appetite to support or, or decline to support Keno to Go. So Keno is the deal where you walk in, you get your numbers, you look at the screen, you depart it sometime later. Keno to Go, you depart immediately and I guess-
They have that now?
We already have.
They have that.
We have it all over town.
I'm sorry, yeah.
What's new about that?
So, no, uh, um, so Keno to Go, you already allow?
Yeah.
So you should be receiving notices when individual establishments are applying for a Keno to Go license?
Have we ever gotten such a notice?
We have Keno to Go in-
I can never not remember any, maybe when it initially started.
It, it exists in certain businesses and-
It's like buying a scratch ticket.
Yeah, I mean, has anybody heard a complaint? Have we had the police called? Have we had a public safety issue?
It hasn't risen to my level, that doesn't mean nothing has happened, so.
But the Keno to Go is just like you buying a scratch ticket or a gallon of milk, it's the same thing.
Yeah, there's no definition of what to go means, leave, come back, I don't really-
I guess you could stand there and look at your phone, and that would, you would not be enjoined from doing that.
That's true.
And then you would-
In theory, you're supposed to exit the premises, that, that was the discussion a prior board had, is there was concern about, well, what if they just keep coming back? Well, come on, we're going to start putting the clock on how long they have to stay out?
What are we doing here?
That's, yeah, that-
Come on.
And I'm just asking with the board's desirance, that's all.
Oh, yeah, do you want this to apply as a policy to Keno to Go was, Avery's?
Sorry, it is drafted just to apply to Keno right now, so we can-
If it ain't broken?
That's totally fine.
Is there any other decisions we need to make tonight?
I, I had a broad question I wanted to wait until now.
Yep.
Some of the financial technology in our industry has evolved such that we can start tying the issuer licenses to other behaviors, such as not paying your taxes, not paying your water bills.
We couldn't do that before.
The technology wasn't there to do it easily. What's the board's appetite and what does the law allow more broadly on licenses? Or if a property is in rear on taxes, water bills, whatever.
With regard to licensing, is there regard to renewing licenses or issuing licenses or, you know, does the board have any legal standing to say no to a Keno license because someone hasn't paid their water bill? My guess is with Keno, probably not, because it's a state license.
Yeah, this one probably not because it's a state license. I know that it applies to permits, that statute you're thinking of, I'm not sure off the top of my head if it applies to license, that's something I can get back to.
Okay, but I, I want you to think about that, because we've never discussed it on purpose, because the technology was too hard. It's now possible.
So, um, if I could, when, when a tax bill goes delinquent, how long are we talking now? 60 days, 90 days?
Yeah, I was thinking more water bills.
Water bills are, are by month, correct?
Get leaned to the tax bill in a couple of years.
Every three months.
Every three, I don't, you know.
They're every three months, but they don't get leaned to a tax bill for a long time.
It used to be a year, they just changed it.
How long is that?
Usually two years in Reading, it's at least a year.
Is that a policy?
It's a practice, I don't, I don't know, I want to say it's a policy.
That I think is how you solve the problem. You know, if somebody doesn't pay that bill, it becomes a tax title, and that means somebody can walk in to that property and recover, pay the tax title and claim a, and, and claim a lien and title on that property. And that's the way you solve that problem, in my opinion.
Generally speaking, and I do mean this very broadly, in Massachusetts, the laws of what you can do on the finance side are fairly lenient versus what you can do on the operations side to get better behavior. So I can't close on a piece of property and put them in tax title nearly as fast as I can not issue them a permit if they're a business.
So-
That's really, it's the stick and the carrot.
And, you know, and it's a, this probably is a different discussion for a different day, but I understand you want to encourage good behavior and that, you know, and by that, we mean certainly in the environment we're in, that people are paying their bills in a timely way.
And-
And that they're not intentionally-
Right.
-allowing their water bill to go into tax title so that they can somehow nefariously pay that and think they can deduct it as a, as a tax bill.
And that happens as, I'm sure you-
Even though that's illegal, of course.
Yeah.
People, you know, there are people that do this.
Yeah.
And so, you know, to me, I think what, you know, the, the practice has been two years, that's a long time.
Yeah, it is.
I mean, it seems like to me, I don't know what our legal standing would be.
New treasure, new ideas.
Yeah, you know, I think that, you know, I think it's reasonable to expect people to pay their bills. And if somebody has a problem, I understand that, and if somebody comes in and says, you know what, um, I, I'm not going to be able to pay in this cycle and here's why, and you work out a payment plan with them, there's no reason why you couldn't do that.
We do on a regular basis.
And, and I think we should do that, I, I think that's highly appropriate.
The issuance of a permit, I mean, a permit is a privilege, it's not a right. So if you're coming in here and you're asking for a permit, it's reasonable, it's a reasonable expectation that you be asked, are you, are you taking care of your other town obligations?
I don't disagree.
And that we would use that as a say, well, you know.
But that's a permit, not a license.
Well, that was my question.
Yeah, so.
First of all, if you don't have the appetite for it, there's no point in looking at it, it's up to you.
I think it's a good opportunity to have the conversation, you can decide whether you want them enforced.
I think we should explore all avenues to get, to manage our revenue best. We, we've promised people we would do that.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't avoid it, but I'd use it-
Yeah, and just, just to be clear, this is not a problem in Reading. This is very much at the margin.
I wouldn't imagine.
We collect, you know, as high percent of taxes as any community does.
Very low on that, that is what you've, that you've showed us before, I know that.
But we have from time to time run into people who do it as a strategy, as you discussed, for that and other reasons.
It's clear that there are people doing it.
You know, maybe they want to expand their business and they need a bunch of licenses and permits to do it, and they stop for cash flow reasons, stop paying any bills.
There are businesses that do that as well. There are homeowners that do that as well.
Yeah, and we'll catch them eventually, they always do.
You know, I just think, technology is such that we can have good policy and practice tied to each of the things that we've just discussed, you know, whether it's the issuance of permits, whether it's a more timely move to tax title, I mean, you know, kind of all of those things. I think we should, I think all of that should be on the table.
I agree. So we recorded no changes from Avery's draft in front of us with the, we haven't discussed the number of days to notification, but it's proposed to be 10 days. Are there any other proposed changes to the draft language?
I think you want to look at 5A also.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was going to say, uh.
Thank you, yes.
What's our other bylaw state, 500 feet, uh, there's some other-
300 feet is 100 yards. This is a business that's doing nothing different really in, inside its business.
So with this one, we would send a letter to this commission, and I would notify them that this is a request of the local community. It's on them whether they follow it or not, just want to make sure that that's clear.
It's in their discretion.
Yeah, it's in their discretion.
Is there a distance we apply today for similar constraints that's convenient to reuse here?
I believe the board of health recently changed from 500 to 1,000 feet for one of their regulations.
That's for tobacco, yeah.
That was, that's a little different animal.
Yeah, but it's similar in terms of children, where children congregate, which-
But the 1,000 feet covered one store.
Right.
We just put 500 feet.
500 did not, that's correct, so.
I'd be happy to put 500 in there.
Yeah.
Because there could be some places that go in after the fact. I'd be happy with 500.
What are we, it sounds like the board is fine with 500 and 10 day notification.
Right, and maybe we should do unless otherwise waived because, um, just in case there's a situation where the meetings, yeah, so we can waive that in writing, I'll add language.
That's a great idea.
10 day thing?
Yeah, just in case, so you don't have to hold a special meeting.
We're going to be cutting this close every time.
Right, so we'll put language in there.
And, you know, in a way, that's good, it gets us off the dime and it, it doesn't delay the process so that the applicant knows what they're dealing with, one way or the other.
Receipt of the notice from the commission.
I think so, yeah.
Bob, your point about slow legal mail, this is on the receipt of the notice, so the mail delay doesn't, doesn't apply. It's not until it arrives here that the clock starts, not true?
Not necessarily. It's one of the post office or whoever delivers the mail says it's been delivered. Now, again, if it's some kind of a registered receipt, I'm good with that.
It should be under the statute that are required to sign up via certified mail.
I'm okay with that.
So, it's not the physical receipt of the notice in, in our hands?
Correct, it's when it's been...
If you've ever seen my desk, you'd be very concerned about that statement.
Okay, all right, understand. Any other comments from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Let the Board of Selectmen adopt the Keno policy as amended.
Second. A second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Four zero.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, here we are.
All right, just one more last, and can you authorize Ray and I to send a letter to the state reflecting the adoption of these conditions?
I don't think we need a motion, please go ahead and do it.
No, okay, thanks.
Yeah, do it.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Waited patiently while we got here, I think.
So, you know, we can now do this, Bob, you'll get the, you'll get notification. Is it possible that when you get that notification, you just send it out to, to us, the board? So, if any of us hasn't, you know, we could...
Is that appropriate to send it out to the whole board?
You can send it out to the whole board, but then the board can't communicate...
No, we can't, we can't do, right.
We can only communicate to Bob, right?
To Bob, right.
Oh, that's like, you know, that's right in the middle of a neighborhood with a lot of parking issues. I'm, I have a concern, and then maybe have the, you know, decide to have a, you know, not all the time, but just on a one, case by case.
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure that out.
Something may jump out at any one of us. And I think preserving that right is a, is a wise choice.
Again, you know, I, I, we get one crack at it, because apparently, unlike the other things, unless they do something, you know, really crazy, you know, the state will just renew it, and there's nothing that we can do about it. But there'll be people in the room potentially, and, you know, we do this. I hate to have that happen.
Best intentions of men. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, nice to have you.
Thanks.
All right, next on the topic is the Board of Selectmen survey, which is, oh, no, we've got to do the town manager. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm ahead.
Yeah, that, this'll be quick. It was, it was in your packet.
We're ahead of time.
Yeah, I actually have only one question.
Okay.
And that is, I like the bundling, I think it's much more effective. So, the only question becomes, I mean, one of the things, and you may or may not have done this on purpose, I, knowing you, you probably did, there's five bundles and there's five selectmen. However, when I look at inside the bundles, it makes me almost, you know how you've mixed and matched your staff person?
Yeah.
Should we be mixing and matching, or should we just stick to a bundle?
Well, it's, it's obviously up to you, but last year, I, I thought one selectmen per bundle was appropriate. Honestly, this year, I don't think it is. I think each of you should look at the twenty-five goals and tell me what you're interested in.
It's almost like the committees. You know, when I, when I think about the composition of the skill set of the board...
Yeah.
I see them cross roughing out of the bundles.
Okay.
That's why I think it'd be ideal if we all just put forth those that we're passionate about or interested in.
Yeah, I, I thought last meeting, we left it that way, but clearly not, since no one answered.
Were we supposed to do that?
Well, I don't know.
I thought it was by, but I thought it was by bundle.
Okay, no.
I thought it was by bundle as well.
So, I came prepared to...
No, I, I, I thought it was, I thought we were going to do it the way you had just initially suggested.
So, we're all in violent agreement, so let's do it.
So, do we want to just wait and send this to you?
Send me an email.
Send it, we should send it to you, right?
I can resend out a form with the twenty-five, if you want, if it's easier for you, and then you can just indicate your interest.
No, it's fine, we can just check off, we can, send it as a spreadsheet with a open slot next to it, so that we could put our name in there.
Check, all that apply.
All that apply, there you go.
I'll just ask you, typically, we do one, two, three. I don't remember which is more interesting, which is less, but that gives me some idea, because you've got to fill it all.
I think the way that you did the committees, however we got that spreadsheet...
Okay.
How many more nights do you have open in a month?
Just remember, once you put your name to it...
Not all of these have night meetings.
I understand. I've been to a few of these in the daytime. I have another on tomorrow.
Actually, that's something we should bring up now. Who plans to go tomorrow to the North Reading meeting?
What time is that?
Three thirty.
Which meeting is that?
North Reading, MWR, you know, internal.
I saw that on my account, I didn't have a place and time, though.
I was unaware of it, because I...
I'm hoping only two of you want to go.
I couldn't attend the last one.
I should, one of us should probably go for continuity.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't...
I'll, I'll send you both a draft agenda.
When is it tomorrow? What time is it?
About three thirty.
Why, did, where is it?
Town Hall.
Town Hall. Here.
Bring the donuts.
It's here.
I think I can make it.
Either way, it's fine. If you can get out of work, go.
All right, I'm already committed, I'm going.
Right next door.
All right, you're going, Dan, you're going to go, because you've been there.
I'll go.
And I'm, I'm available as the backup, because I've been to these, so many of these.
Yep, yep. Couple twists and turns here, but we'll be fine, I think, I'll, I'll... What else?
I think we're caught up to the survey, unless you want to do minutes first, in case anyone's coming for, uh...
What time is our...
Well, you're twenty minutes early, so... Sorry, guys.
It doesn't feel like it.
The Keno took it out of us, didn't it? Why don't we go through the minutes real quick?
Move to, approve the minutes of June twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, as amended.
Second. Yeah, we have a second, any further discussion?
I checked all the appointments, Caitlin, you got it a hundred percent right.
Thank you.
Including the three that I added on the spot.
I'm fine with everything I saw in there.
My only comment is on page, it's marked six eight two, on the hazard mitigation plan. The discussion that went on was much longer than this suggests. I, I don't think it needs much, I would just say that there was a lengthy discussion on improvements and...
A melee ensued.
It wasn't just a typo on page one.
That's where it started, and it ended bad.
A demand for refund was issued.
They were very good about it, also.
Unprecedented commentary.
Okay, that was my only comment. Any other amendments? If at all, all those in favor? Four zero. And we're still twenty minutes ahead.
Take a two-minute break.
Why don't we take a bio break here?
If I could just point out, there's a policy, there's a draft survey in your packet tonight that has the final suggested language. And after discussing this with Matt, he just had one, well, he had a couple of suggestions. One that I think is sort of intuitive is, you can't circle things online.
I caught that.
Sure you can.
Yeah, exactly. He said, you may want to say select or something like that. I said, yeah, that's a good idea.
So, SurveyMonkey can tell you all the statistics, how many boxes were checked in?
Well, and they'll also fix the format.
Yeah, I, I look...
This format will work.
Well, just, just to give you some background, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I have, I have no knowledge of SurveyMonkey at all, it's an interesting name. Our library has a test license, I'll call it, which would have been far too limited for your purposes, a hundred responses, ten questions maximum. But they were kind enough over the weekend to develop a draft, which I really did appreciate. We then took it over downstairs and put it in a full version, if you will.
Oh, into their template?
Their template into, you know, the multiple user. We have a full license in Town Hall and so on and so forth.
Of course, SurveyMonkey.
So, technologically, we're ready to go with whatever edits you decide, but I have to give you the caveat that I've never used it, so I don't, I don't know if there's kind of unexpected consequences here. Normally, I know that stuff, I can tell you, I just don't know.
So, this has been drafted already in some earlier version?
Yes, yes. This draft that is currently in front of you, without the select question, change, rather, is in SurveyMonkey.
We've gone through it a cou, somebody's gone through it a couple times and said it's executing properly.
That I don't know. In our old software associated with our website, we specifically did not do that, because you could not discriminate and throw out data you didn't want to count in a survey. So, we couldn't test it, because that was, that was the first response, and the second response.
They don't have a sandbox to test it in?
No.
So, you couldn't put it on there and then just have one person do it and see if it came through?
That was, again, that was a website free tool that came with our website, that we used to use frequently, very, and, and then it would be spammed. And it would give you nonsense answers.
I see.
And we couldn't, you know, exclude that either, other than just through discussion.
Do we even know that the two A, two B, two C is processing right? Where, depending on the answer to one, it goes to the right question? Do we even have that?
I don't know if you can forbid questions, if forbid, or determine a path. So, in other words, you know, it says, please do this, I don't know that we can ensure that's the only path you can take.
I think SurveyMonkey will...
Will do that.
...solve that formatting problem for you. For example, it won't look like this.
Okay.
It's gonna, I mean, because there's, this calls for a circle.
So, when, so when you say...
It's going to put a radio button, and you're going to click it.
Right, yes, that does do that, right.
So, if you, if you, like, clicked...
If you choose A...
If you clicked, you know, two, you couldn't, that, the radio wouldn't light up for you to do B, because you've already picked A.
I believe that that's what you're going to see.
Or is it just going to take you to two, and it's going to be a different two, depending on what...
It's correct, we can, I, I know that you can force just choose one. So, in number one, you choose one, you can only choose one.
Right.
What I don't know is if you choose one A, does it send you to two A and then just make you skip over two B and two C?
It has to be able, that's, it just has to.
I believe that's what it does.
Okay, that would seem to be not, be difficult to program, but...
Who, who is programming this? The library?
Probably, right now, it's Jane Miller downstairs. She's got a lot of experience with this.
You're doing this to test it?
Uh, no, this'll be for live. I mean, I'm sure she could do a test version, yes.
Okay, I misunderstood. I thought you said that that, their program only could manage our...
The library did it over the weekend, just to get it started, and, and tested it, and it was fine.
Oh, so they did.
That part's, so, you know, I, again, I have no knowledge. I don't know, does it take, you know, an hour, does it take two days to get these things going? I, I used it.
Oh, you did, okay.
So, I have a question. Who is the professional management instrument for this survey?
I would say Matt and Jane, Jane Miller and Matt Cronos.
I ask it the wrong way.
Okay.
The library is going to manage this?
They started it for us.
They started it, they programmed it, they've stepped away. It's your survey, it's now on autopilot.
Okay, are we using a professional survey tool?
SurveyMonkey, yes.
That's what I'm trying to ascertain.
Yes.
Okay, so, we're going to use them, we're going to, we're going to present to them our finished product after tonight.
Them being...
SurveyMonkey.
That's just a piece of software.
That's the engine that puts all this data together, and in theory generates reports and tells us...
We just have a license to use that piece of software.
Somebody has an administrator license to go in and pull the results out.
That's what I'm saying, there's an...
And that'll be Matt and Jane.
It has to be constructed.
It's got that.
Right, that's right.
And they can do that in a month, they can do that in a week, and give you interim data.
Okay, again, you're asking the wrong guy. That would seem like a reasonable thing.
By the way, it's the same tool they're using for the Comcast survey, if you noticed.
Right.
Is it okay?
You said you did it, Bob, did it jump over, did it give you all of the twos, A, B, and C, or did it jump over? Do you remember?
I don't remember, honestly.
But, but you didn't look at it and go, oh, this is wrong?
I didn't notice anything that was obviously broken or wrong. Right. And...
In looking over the, the choices we're giving folks, there is some advantage to saying, name your top three, in that you force people to think it through and prioritize what's really important.
Where would you apply, where you...
Well, you could say, instead of select all that apply, you could say, select the three most relevant in each category, as opposed, because I could see where you, some of the people are going to check a lot of boxes, and your informational content may be kind of diluted. See what I'm saying?
Yeah, the one instance, I think you're, you're absolutely correct. There'll be a tendency for some people to say, you know, all, click, 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 and it kind of dilutes the value of it. So, forcing it to be limited to three does form some, force some discretion.
And you'll see some spikes in, in the responses that way.
There's only...
But you have to adjust the software if you do that, because this software's been written a different way.
I don't know that. I assume it can be adjusted.
Is it a big deal?
I don't know.
No, I don't want to...
I was good when I'm the one that knows how to use things, but I can't say.
Well, like, question four has, like, how did you, how do you gather your information?
You may have somebody that knows what they're doing.
That's okay.
The audience, John.
Oh, hi Vanessa.
Can I ask you a question? Do you have the current draft in paper?
Yeah.
We have it in our packet. In our packets, I can't get it up.
We have a bulky projector, so unfortunately, it's not projecting.
We have extra packets.
You know what, here, you can just take mine. I have, I have it on, uh...
Whatever's left for the media packet.
Yeah, they have, they have stuff left there. I'm going to assume that if you want to change it from pick all that apply to pick the top three, we can do that, not a problem.
All right, just a thought I...
What's the sense of the board to change from check all to check your top three?
But which question with that, with that?
I think it's two A, two B.
It would be two A, two B. I think two C is okay, as it is.
Actually, one issue, I, I'm sure it doesn't represent this way, but two B starts at I rather than A.
That's just, that doesn't matter. Don't worry about that.
That's Microsoft word.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Got to re-kick the index.
Well, sir, anywhere it says circle all that apply, which is...
Well, I would say, let's limit it to two A, two B, there's a lot of choices. I, I'm okay with letting two C, just have the choices that are there.
Three?
Uh, three, I would say, yeah.
Yes, what?
Apply it there.
Top three?
Top three, four, no need. That's the last one. One answer, one answer.
And then eight?
Um, yeah, well...
No, I think it's important to kind of get a breadth of what people use.
Yeah, I would agree with Eric.
And actually, there was one that I would add in, that, you know, between veteran services and other, and for just sort of an encompassing thing, is, and Bob, I don't know which department would go, but just have, applying for a permit. Have you applied for a permit, whether that be a variance or a business permit?
Building.
Building permit.
That's gonna be hard because some, majority is building inspector, building department. You know, people may interpret the word permit to be, I go to the town clerk for something or I go to Caitlin for something, so.
Well, actually, you know what? Maybe just say town clerk.
Public services.
You gotta be gone to the window.
Yeah, that's a common, common visit.
And she, and we know the things that she encompasses.
Or pay a bill upstairs. I mean, you know, what's the point of the survey is really the, what information are you trying to gather?
What are we gonna do with the data? I mean, you could say Town Hall for that matter. People gone to Town Hall, pay a bill, see Laura, see Caitlin.
I think it's, I look at this as kind of like a two-way informational system. Obviously, we're trying to gather information about the public. Both their, you know, their perception of things, their appetite. But it's also a way for us to communicate to the public about some of the things that we're really kind of thinking about as we, you know, craft the next task. And so I think the more information that we have in terms of what people use, again, I don't think it's something on this. I'd say like, what do you think is the most important thing? Veterans versus human elder services or, you know, I don't think we want to rank those, but it's just to get a sense of, you know, what people are using. I think it's important.
We're gonna do that probably in the second round when we sharpen the pencil. Did you want to add Town Hall or...
Like, yeah, just some, like, whether, yeah, permitting came to mind because maybe it does encompass a lot of different things.
The problem with permitting is... There because if we have to cut back on public services, that's gonna impact permitting.
Right, but I think this is already like, my point is, you want to do that in greater detail than the current survey allows you to do. This might open the door to it, but...
Maybe a second round?
The second round.
Yeah, or just say, or just say Town Hall, you know.
All right.
You could simplify human elder services, recreation, veterans to be Town Hall. It's all here. But the reason those are there is I thought there was some interest in the board in sort of cross-tabulating.
Right.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no easy way to draw that line and say, that's, this is the right bunch.
Well, you know, instead of...
Because Veterans Services kind of stands out as, well, obviously, there's not a large segment of our community using that. Why are you even asking? And the question is, well, if you wanted to cross-tab or, what are the things you really want to think about in terms of demographics that cross-tab?
I agree.
And I don't know. That's, that's an open question.
Well, maybe instead of permitting or Town Hall, just say Town Clerk.
I can just add that certainly.
Why don't we add it in between F and G, add Town Clerk? Then we call it a day, gentlemen. You're done? No further changes?
No, I thought it was, listen, we...
That's good for, you started it, Barry. It's a good job.
No, we, I mean, we all just, I mean, again, the more eyes that look at it, you know, and there's, there's two eyes over there.
Okay, we'll get you a link.
By the way, this is thirty-four bucks a month, so, I'm sorry, Vanessa. Yes?
Thank you. Ms. Alvaro, I understand from our last meeting that you would collaborate with the community in a, I think, a certain way of starting off this survey. As I quickly read through this, there was a couple of things that jumped out. One, for question two A, if you voted yes, circle all that apply and then question three. There, it might be beneficial to include some language as to why you voted or priorities that you voted to, because there's no action between respect to the question and the options.
Wait, I'm sorry, say that again?
For two A, so if you voted yes, please discuss five of why you voted or the top three below for why you voted yes. Just a minor suggestion. That's a question?
We're still not getting the action part, so if you, if you...
So if you were to read this, if you voted yes, please circle all that apply and then skip to question three, historical cuts. There's no association between the question and the options.
Are you clear that the board changed it to select the top three for this one, not circle all that apply?
Yes, excuse me, Vanessa.
I don't know if that helps.
Yes, thank you. Question five, I still found, if you vote all.
Yeah, it was more a folksy way of saying it.
But I don't know if that's any of them.
It isn't, but...
You know what? That was actually better.
What's that? Let me look it up.
Let me see if I can find it. That was good.
Has a bias been changed?
It's been a proposal. I've gotta dig it up here. Who did I send it to?
Is that new or...
The wording is a little different. John or Dan, Barry changed it.
Could I suggest, how do you think your tax bill for a five hundred thousand, five thousand, five hundred thousand home compares to other communities similar to Reading?
I think that's kind of what you...
So I think you probably do question six before five. Six sort of sets that framework for Reading. Well, I guess that doesn't really tell you how much you're paying now, though.
I cast the question a little differently. I think I said Reading uses twenty-five-year communities in Massachusetts for statistical and demographic comparison. Without looking it up, would you, what would be your assumption of Reading's average home bill, tax home bill compared to the peer average? In other words, we know you don't know.
Right.
That's just...
It's just, and that's just what you just said, kind of.
Yeah, I think John's wording is pretty clear.
Yeah, that was good.
And then technical for five A, which should either be more or higher, not more higher annually?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. It's more better and more higher.
It's a littler.
I don't know about that. I haven't think about that.
Is it a more higher?
No, no.
I think it's right.
It is right.
One thousand or more, that's, that's a pause.
Thousand or more. Higher than.
One thousand or more annually or one thousand or more, great, well...
Does it need punctuation in order to clarify it? Because it sounds dopey. Okay, just saying. I mean, I, I get where you're going with this, but I think it needs something.
You could change it to one thousand plus sign, higher?
Yeah.
Are you making notes, Bob?
Yeah, I don't know how you do that, but...
How about we put the annual up here in the text and take it out down here, how that gets rid of some of the complexity.
John, I think I have the language you just read.
I said it to you.
Yeah. And I'll change if the board is agreeable, A to plus, thousand plus, and E to a thousand minus.
Yeah, you can, Bob, you can move annually up to this text portion, so you have to repeat it in the questions.
Okay, yep.
For five F, perhaps you can, I have no idea, do, I'm uncertain.
I like that the way it stood out on the next page.
I have no idea.
Clueless.
Well, you want people to kind of maybe smile with the, go to question six.
Beats me.
Question seven.
Yeah, exactly.
For question seven, perhaps you could rephrase one of these or add an option for those who don't have children at all?
Yeah, that was there originally and it was combined into B. I have not had any attend or plan to attend, which is a...
The implication there is that you have children, but they are at school elsewhere.
No, I don't, I don't think that's the implication from a consumer. I've not had any children attend.
The inference there is that you have children.
I don't know.
Not had any children attend or plan to attend. So it encompasses people who don't have children at all, as well as people who have children that do not go to the schools or ever will go to the schools.
I think she's saying, yeah, but they could attend to school other than RPS.
What if they go to a private school?
Right, I think that's what her point is. It's...
The implication there is that they attend a private school, especially for Reading.
Correct, that's, that's what it's there, that's what's there.
There's no, but what if you simply don't have children at all?
She's right. So we've combined two. You don't have them or you do have them, but they're not gonna attend and we merged those.
I thought that was your conscious choice to not separate those two thoughts out and to cast some negative aspersion on the schools for those that went to private schools.
Correct, that was an attempt. We tried it the other way and it looked a little too stark. I don't have kids. Okay, all right, do it. I have kids, but they're not going to, you know, they're not gonna...
Right, I, I, to me, that's the more interest, that's, I want to know.
We wrote it that way originally and we got morphed into this. So we're at the point now where actually making it worse.
We wrote it originally that way and there was some concerns, and not necessarily from anybody in this room, but it came up that you were now polarizing those with children and those without children.
That's right, I remember that.
I mean, that was the complaint about the way we had it before.
Yes.
So we were responsive to that and tried to kind of, you know, find a way to get to both of those things inside of one question to avoid polarization because that's, it was separated before.
That was a feeling that was, I mean, you know, we can honor that.
Okay, anything else, Vanessa?
Those are all the high-level ones. I had some general questions about, I know we discussed, or you can discuss, distribution methods, timeline. Have those types of issues or questions been ironed out?
We're just talking about it for the first time tonight, so...
Oh, all right, all right.
Is this gonna be purely a Survey Monkey instrument or are we going to afford anyone a chance?
At a minimum, plan to do hard copies in Town Hall, the library, in the senior center.
How can those be integrated to one?
But they enter them separately.
We'll have to have staff enter them, yeah, as a proxy.
Do it administrator.
Charge five bucks each, maybe people do it themselves.
Survey Monkey, maybe nobody knows this answer. Can they check on multiple submissions from one IP address?
Yeah, there's, there's ways to do that and it's an open question whether you want to consciously try to prevent that. It's a complicated issue, as you probably know.
Not a high priority. I think most people will not do that.
Hate to make you do this, but...
Let's put it this way. If someone enters multiple answers, we will know what you want to do with it. It's a different question.
Can you quickly review the edits you've collected then?
Sure. So we have... Question two A and two B will be a pick top three.
And circle goes to select.
Circle goes to select in all of these.
Yeah.
Question three goes to pick top three. Look at your language for question five for rewording and remove annual from down below and make sure it's only up above.
Yep.
I will change more to plus or minus in choices A and E. Make sure that makes sense. I will add Town Clerk to question eight. That's, and then I think we already did this in Survey Monkey, but thank you again belongs at the end, not before. Lastly, is there anything you want to add? So, that's it.
Is there a way for, I guess, Matt or Jane to kind of compile the...
The last part?
The last part into sort of, you know, categories or, I mean, there's gonna be...
Not in advance, no.
No, but I mean, just as, as it gets collected, sort of...
Have you done, maybe?
Yeah, that's what I mean.
What we've done in the past is, some surveys, you might get a couple hundred answers, list all the text in the order that was received.
Just read them.
Just read them.
By the way, you're gonna get...
I think the library did that.
You're gonna get the others, you have others, fill in the blanks, too.
That's true. Right, okay.
All right, speaking up, sorry?
How's the fourth line of distributing the information after the survey?
I think you gotta wait for reasonable data. I think the worst thing that will frustrate would be to take the first three dozen and say, great, this is the trend. We really need to make sure we get it statistically relevant. I'm thinking it's gotta be...
Do we want to let it, like, do we want to put a timeline on it?
We should put a...
I'd like to see what you catch first before we decide we're done.
You definitely want to go into September.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm thinking like a three-month thing, but...
We'll see.
Well, it's now July.
Middle September.
Maybe, maybe in time for discussion at the October Financial Forum would be great.
If you can have results tabulated.
If this thing actually gets launched, sooner or later.
So it's out for six or eight weeks would be probably enough.
Take it out to the end of September. Now, it's, you know, it's, the compiling is pretty quick.
But yeah, the compiling is like, it's, it's, it's an Excel.
You have to hand meld the manuals, right?
But when is the, when is the October forum?
October eleventh, I think.
I think if you shut it off on September thirtieth, you've given more than ample time.
I'd say the fifteenth.
To answer your question directly, I'm not sure how, if we only ended up with twenty or thirty responses, I'd be disappointed, but I don't even think they're relevant at that point. You'd need, you'd need a minimum of a hundred and fifty, two hundred.
You're gonna have hundreds.
One of the things that, one of the things that I would hope and suggest is that, you know, through the different networks, I mean, it'll be available, I'm assuming on the Town website, to just drive people to that and just like pound them until I take the survey and take the survey. We'll put it out there and we'll advertise it. I'm sure friends and friends will do that one ask. But we're really relying on the power of people to tell their friends and family and neighbors. This is really, this is the first step. We really need this information. Really just drive people to the, to the website to take the survey.
And to your second question, I think it should take the results, stratify them in some useful way and present them in, in paper or one of our meetings perhaps, just summarize it. And then we decide what we do as a second step. I could easily imagine we would take one or two of these questions and use those as the subject matter for an expanded set of questions and do that in the second round, most likely. And, you know, if we finish this in October, I can't see, we can't take as much time in the second round as we did this time. We were trying to get this out by June.
Yeah, and we, but, but...
We started in May.
We got it right, though, I think.
So, well, hopefully, some of the lessons learned will help us the second go around. Bob?
I asked a couple, a handful of staff in the building, what's the most important question? And it was unanimous that why did you vote no is the most important piece of data from this. So, you know, you don't want to encourage people, you know, who voted yes as much as you want to encourage those that voted no. You really want to know. Did you even not know about the election? I'm sure you heard from people that said that. I, I did. What election? And some that thought they were voting on the state ballot question.
I would say, did you vote no is one and then three...
Why did you not?
And then what would, what would motivate you differently today? Those are the two.
Yeah.
And then the rest of this is just maybe input for us in terms of how people get their information.
Yeah.
How they, the value system they use. Because frankly, we're blind, right? That's really, a lot of this is to put some headlights in terms of where we are.
It's kind of like, it's the last person who talked to us.
Well, not quite that bad, but...
Social media.
Yeah, sorry, question?
Michelle Stankis, so kind of what Vanessa was asking was, so as circulating through different networks and the community, friends and family, is there a certain number, like an ideal goal that the board would like to have? I'm just thinking in terms of circulating it, like a hundred, thousand, I mean, I know you said one fifth.
No, that's a minimum. I think more is always better because it's statistically relevant. This is more like a health check. We're trying to get a sense of what's on people's minds. The more is gonna give us more granularity and more, more meaningful results. If you, if you only get a couple hundred, you really wonder if you've seen, we have, we have what, twelve?
Sixteen thousand voters.
Sixteen thousand registered voters, right?
What was the votes cast in the last, sixty-eight hundred in the override?
That's what you want to zero in on. If you can get one percent of the votes, so if you had sixty-eight hundred votes in the last election, you get six hundred and eighty responders.
One percent?
It's one percent. Well, one percent, ten percent, that's right.
One percent is stratified, it's not stratified, so.
Although, let's say, although I can envision, let's say, you know, we're doing, we're doing six, six, eight weeks, right? We're five weeks into it and we have a thousand surveys.
That's probably enough.
Right? But it's easy to go in and see what you have. You have a thousand surveys, but seven hundred and fifty of those thousand people said, I voted yes. That's not as good a sample as a hundred.
Well, it's gonna tell you how reliable or unreliable the information is about what we need to do.
I'd rather have, instead of, I'd rather have five hundred responses that might more adequately reflect the way the vote went.
This is the point I was making when I talked about polling.
Right, it's not gonna be scientific.
When you do real polling, you set up a universe that's set according to that.
Right, but we don't have that choice here.
Right.
And we're gonna have selection bias where folks will be naturally motivated to answer and they'll be overrepresented in the results. We can't conclude anything on the basis of the ratios. It's only the absolute responses that we can entertain.
I mean, you can't do what pollsters do is scale the results to the election results.
I don't get paid enough for that.
So, you know, you throw...
But I think the most valuable, the most valuable thing is to simply say, for those that said no is the motivation, for those that said yes, and normalize it.
Right. But it, but, but I guess to answer your question, more is more. I mean, I'd rather have more than less and...
Because as it's circulating through private networks, then that's good to know as you're putting it out that more is better and also you really want to give them no votes.
And please don't stuff the ballot box.
Please vote once.
This is not a vote.
From the library and take a hundred copies.
It's not a contest.
Yeah, it's not a contest, right?
This is not voting for your...
Yes, sir. Stand, let us know your name and your street.
I'm Tom Holmes on the Gleason Road. And I wasn't gonna say anything except I just noticed this. After thirty-one years of working at the Golden Herald, I'm a very big print news guy. But for A, in my new life writing for the past, I'd rather be in one of my towns, I would say get rid of the world of print. You sound like a bunch of old timers, know their names, to print.
I think the intention there was...
We didn't put the patch in here.
I'm not even asking for it.
No, that was, that was not deliberate.
That's fine, that's fine.
More other news sources, because I'll know what print is gonna be.
You raise a really interesting point and the discussion was based on physical hard newspapers or electronic. Now, in theory, C was meant to cover the Reading Advocate online. I'm not sure it's a terribly clear question now that I think of it this way.
Well, and I'll say this, within an hour after this meeting, there's gonna be one place you've been new to.
Yeah.
I don't know. These two gals might beat you to it.
Other than Facebook, yeah.
That's a good feedback. I think the intention here was to determine, ab to the other questions, where were people getting their information? Was it the print press? Was it online? And with what sites?
So what you're advocating with that is, and I think you're right, that there, you're missing a bullet.
Yeah, I think we might.
I, I think you're right about that because there are people who get their news from...
Online news.
The Patch or the Reading Post or wherever they get AOL, I mean, you know. So I do think it would be appropriate to put another bullet in there that separates other electronic news sources from the print.
From the print, yeah.
So we're just saying, electronic, online news source.